A Film Commission is needed because we need to market the film industry in a way that we haven't been doing. We need to compete with cities throughout the country and internationally that are developing their own film industries and taking production away from us. And I also want to say that that's a good thing for the city of Los Angeles. The fact that there's competition is good because we want people to watch movies all over the world, but we want those movies to be produced in Hollywood to a greater extent. The Film Commission would be distinct from Film LA. Film LA's primary function is to move the permit process and ensure that film shoots are done in a way that is not negatively intrusive into the communities, but in fact enhances opportunities for our communities. But the Film Commission would be a marketing tool to the world as well as to local communities to improve their appreciation for the filming hindrances that occur when shoots are going on. This report is not a final action. What it asks the CLA to do is to report back on how we would construct a Film Commission, what it would be comprised of, and also how we would fund it. These are sparse times, but that's exactly why we need to do this. We want to increase job opportunities in the city of Los Angeles, and this industry pays the best wages as compared to most other large industries in our community. It creates a wealth of economics that benefit all people of Los Angeles. I believe the Film Commission is an important thing for us to do. I'm anxious to get the report on January 12th that this motion would provide. The CLA is already moving forward with drafting that report. I believe that we will come back in short order with a more specific recommendation on structure, on funding, that will meet the goals of this city council, not only to establish a Film Commission, but really to promote filming in Los Angeles and expand the industry instead of seeing it shrink as it has in the past decade.
Thanking Mr. Alakon for his motion and suggesting there are a number of things that need to be done. Council President and District 13 Council Member Eric Garcetti talks about the possibility of having a Film Czar and offers examples of resources available in Los Angeles.
There's three things we need to do, colleagues. We need to market our filming both externally and to our own residents internally. Secondly, we need to make sure that Film LA, when they run into any problems where the city bureaucracy has a counterpart here that can help navigate that bureaucracy with them and alongside them. And third, we got to have an advocate, somebody who can continue the work that we've done at the state, for instance, to get a billion dollars, which Mr. Krikorian, who's soon to become a seatmate next to you, Mr. Labonge, tomorrow did a great job with at the state level to get a billion dollars of tax credits for film that comes back to California. These are the sorts of things that we need to have, a unified voice and a powerful voice. We have the strongest set of talent anywhere in the country here in Los Angeles. We have retired film executives, union leaders. We've got people who are advocates today, who through their volunteer time can be a powerful voice to not only advocate for those legislative changes and those administrative needs, but to make sure that people know, come back to where it all started, here in Los Angeles. There is no place like it. And I think for a lot of folks who might have been looking at filming in Ohio or filming in North Carolina, all you needed to do was turn on that TV set and look at the Rose Parade and realize when you had 75-degree weather here, perfect sunlight, dramatic sunlight, there's a reason why LA is where films really blossomed, and it's a place where they need to blossom again, and I fully support this. One last thing people will say, and I know Mr. Alakon mentioned this before, "In tough times, how can we do this?" We'll do with existing resources and with volunteer help. We should always have our doors open. That's according to District 4 Council Member Tom Labonge, who says there are businesses throughout Los Angeles that serve the film industry. It's not limited to just the Hollywood area.
...here, and I strongly support this commission concept, whatever the factors are. I strongly support getting voices to do that, to advocate for this opportunity, because it is an absolute competitive world. It used to be there were only labs, you know, south of Santa Monica Boulevard that could produce and do the development of the film. Now that can be done throughout the world. Now the computer is here, which does change it. It's a very challenging time, but at the same time, we should always have our doors open. Because as Abe Stein once said, "A rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it in Griffith Park." And that was some 70 years ago as the emerging film industry. So I just wanted to stand to thank you, Mr. Alakon, and your staff, who put together this program of many, multiple offense that you created, that hopefully will be as successful that we could win the challenge of bringing the industry back into live wire that we want it to be. And Mr. Garcetti, as always, I thank you for your leadership and partnership as adjacent to us. I think most of the major motion pitchers, whether they're in our district or right across the street from them or across the LA River in the Burbank area, are very important to all of us.
Thank you. That matters now before us. Colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well. And joining us now is the Chair of the Jobs and Business Committee, District 7 Council Member Richard Alakon. Council Member, welcome back to Council Week in Review.
Always a pleasure.
Relatively new committee that you're chairing. Give us a little background. What's the committee for? What are you doing?
Oh, it's the Jobs and Business Retention and Development Committee, and essentially we're focused on creating jobs. But this year, our President Garcetti has added a couple of functions to it that I enjoy. And then one is the responsibilities to oversee the Film LA effort and filming in general. And also the master plan to end poverty has been incorporated into this, which means that it now is part of a standing committee, which will make it more permanent. So for both those reasons, I was very pleased to take on this committee.
And of course, when we talk about the film industry, that would, I imagine, also include film, television, and the other visual entertainment aspects that are emerging within new technologies as well.
Absolutely. In fact, entertainment industry, because it's the jobs committee, it's very broad. I'm not just focused on film industry, but since we have a problem with runaway production, that is a particular focus at this time, and I want to send a quick message that we were focused on it. But in general, we're looking at other industries as well, everything from logistics to nursing to whatever we think we can contribute to in terms of creating new jobs in Los Angeles and stimulating business.
Well, of course, we wanted to spend a few minutes talking about the Film Commission and the industry that that will be covering. Those combined industries in the past have contributed, of course, a huge amount of revenue to the city of LA and to the Southern California economy. Past five, 10 years, that revenue has decreased substantially. What happened? What went wrong here?
Well, I think, first of all, the economy in general has created financing problems throughout the business community, and so that is one issue. But frankly, the runaway production issue has been a problem since the early 90s, and while we've taken steps to diminish that, there are many reasons why it has continued to be reduced in our city. One of the reasons, there's more competition out there. The technology has been simplified so that the investment into the technology to establish filming opportunities is very small compared to what it was 20, 30, 40 years ago. And so other cities and communities across the world have been able to make that investment in and are now competitive. So I think we have to step it up quite a bit to compete against all these interests. And not that we don't want them to do filming, I think there's a certain synergy involved in all these people doing filming, but we have to claim our share.
And by talking about runaway production, as you pointed out, it's been some decades that that's been an issue around here. It sounds as if you're saying we're never going to get back the full market share that we used to have, but at least we ought to be getting back into a larger market share than we have today.
Yeah, I don't think we want to claim the full market share, because as I said, there is a certain synergy involved with getting the whole world community involved in watching movies. And we want them to watch movies in Hollywood, and to the extent that their filming industry is doing well, that means that their people are watching movies, which means they're watching Hollywood films as much as they're watching anybody else's films. So, no, it's actually a good thing. What we want to talk about is growing the pie, not proportioning the pie. And growing the pie, in that growth, we want to claim a greater share than what we've been getting.
As for now, at least, I guess it's been left up to the city's legislative analysts to come up with the best way to develop a Film Commission. But what is your vision? How large should the commission be? What would the membership come from and things like that?
Well, you know, frankly speaking, the CLA will be tasked with literally writing the report, but we're directing that composition. And what I would envision in working with the council and the mayor's office is a commission that would be comprised of seven to nine members, people who would essentially be cheerleaders for the industry, both internally and externally. And what I mean by internally is it's not just the external forces to bring film into Los Angeles, but our community has to have a greater appreciation for the film industry in terms of its impact, its economic impact, and the fact that our quality of life is benefited because of this industry, and we want to enhance that with the hundreds of thousands of jobs that are impacted by this industry. We want to recognize that. And so essentially, the Film Commission would be a marketing tool, developing a marketing plan to outreach to different communities, different producers, wherever they may want to go, and pull them into Los Angeles, because we have the wealth of resources, the workforce, and the infrastructure to manage their programs better. And with the new effort that we have stimulated, the 19 recommendations on October 7th, the idea of a Film Commission, we know the mayor's going to be proclaiming something very shortly, all of these efforts will essentially embrace the film industry to say, "Hey, we want to do work with you. Let's sit down, let's work, let's see what you need. Do you need tax reductions? Do you need particular care for individual shooting opportunities in our community? Do we need to expand the film locations in Los Angeles, make it easier to film at those locations? What is it we need? Let's work on it. We want to be your partner, because you have been so good to our community."
In addition to the incentives that you just talked about, and that have also frankly lured a lot of the production away, one of the great iconic visions that we have when we see film production around LA, commercial TV, movie, whatever, are long-snaking cables everywhere, and I think you have some ideas for how to make the electrical side of the house work a lot better and be a lot more convenient for producers.
Yeah, I never really thought of it in those terms, but yes, we're actually, one of the recommendations that we made on October 7th was to establish what we call nodes in City Hall, the Department of Water and Power, and a particular section of downtown, where the film industry essentially, when they're filming, can plug in instead of having to move massive generators to the sites. And in doing so, it makes the operation not only better, but less invasive to the community in blocking traffic and those kinds of issues. So that's just one idea. In addition to that, we've asked Department of Water and Power, we got a very positive response from Water and Power, to allow the land under guide wires to be used for film shoot, parking, and other machinery, and they've already freed up that opportunity. So, and in fact, they just have been using that operation for some of their shoots already. And then working with the certain locations to see if we can ameliorate some of the issues that arise in difficulty in filming. We're also, the mayor has met with all the general managers. I'm personally meeting with each general manager in my committee to ask them to tell us what they are doing to ameliorate some of the concerns. Let's move forward, let's improve our processes each year, rather than point the finger of blame at any particular entity or any particular function. If everybody does a better job, I think we can have great impact.
And when you talk about things like fee waivers and tax reductions, I mean, the question obviously comes up, "Wait a minute, we're in a brutal economic environment, we need the revenue here in Los Angeles."
Well, and the best thing I can point to is the fact that the Business Tax Advisory Committee that was comprised several years ago emerged with a series of tax reductions that actually increased the revenue regenerated by almost, I think it was $60 or $70 million. So we believe the same thing can happen, and we have re-instilled the idea of the Business Tax Advisory Committee. We trimmed it, so there's only nine members. And we've also told them that instead of having to come back with a report in 18 months, if they have a good idea, send it on to us immediately. My committee will consider it and move it to council and take action on it as quickly as possible. Included in their responsibility are three motions that were referred to them by my committee that have to do with the film industry specifically, and we hope that those will be expedited in the process. But in general, the Business Tax Advisory Committee generated more revenue before by reducing taxes. We believe the same thing can occur. There is a balance there, we want to be careful, but I think our goal is to increase revenue by reducing taxes, if you can follow that logic.
Well, we remember the laugh we incurred, and of course, that did lead, a lot of people disagreed, but it led to a lot of prosperity, so the economics could be right there. You mentioned a few minutes ago Film LA, and of course, before that, we had EIDC, and there have been a lot of attempts like this in the past. Why do you think that this Los Angeles Film Commission will be successful now, when we've tried so many other opportunities in the past to stop runaway production?
Well, first of all, I was the Chair of the Public Works Committee when we created EIDC, and the responsibility for the Film Permitting Operation was under Public Works, so I was very intricately involved with Mayor Rудen in establishing EIDC. I think it was a very effective tool. Obviously, some mistakes were made by the executive director, but the idea was good. Film LA is an amazing organization, has been very helpful in our permitting process, expediting those permitting processes, and working with the film industry to improve their coordination with the community. They are separate and apart from the Film Commission idea. The Film Commission's idea is marketing. So what I'm saying is, we haven't put all the places, so it's like having a one-legged stool. The Film, if Film LA could not do it all, we need a couple of other legs on that stool to make it whole. One of them is the Film Commission, I believe, to promote marketing, to promote the industry, and to make it appreciated more in the city of Los Angeles and externally, so that more producers will want to film in Los Angeles. And then hopefully, there'll be other elements that are added to it that shore up the stool to make it stronger, and with a good foundation, we think we can lure more business back to LA.
In an op-ed piece that you wrote, I believe for the Daily News, you said, "When you get into a cab in New York, you will see a message from the city of New York explaining why it is you should do your filming, do your production, do your business in New York City." If such a thing were to happen here in LA, could you kind of pull the whole thing together that you've been talking about for the past few minutes? What would your message be if you get that producer in the back of the cab riding out of LAX?
Well, you know, frankly, I'm not sure that taxis, you know, taxis are much more concentrated in New York than they are in Los Angeles. They're used differently, so that may not be the vehicle. But whatever, in Los Angeles, if we're talking about targeting producers and directors out of LAX, for example, then the message would be that we want to work with you. We will work with you personally, individually, but with an understanding that we have the strongest workforce, we have the most talented and diverse set of infrastructure available to you, and tell us what your needs are. Let us compete, and we think we can compete on a higher level. A second message that we have to promote out of the Film Commission is with the community. Our community needs to appreciate the benefit of having high-paid workers, 108,000, I believe, that are directly in the industry, and then for every one of those, there's a multiplier of 2.7 jobs that are impacted by that, which means that just about everybody in Los Angeles is connected to this industry in a way that it improves our quality of life. I think we've lost that image and that connection to Hollywood that we used to have, frankly, when I was a kid. Everybody seemed to understand the connection of Hollywood and how it benefited Los Angeles. We sort of lost some of that. I want to rebuild it. And then thirdly, we want to reach out across the world, literally, to pull productions that are happening in other parts of the world back to Los Angeles and compete with these communities that have developed their own industries to some extent. We don't want to take away completely, because as I said, I think there's a synergy in that. But at the same time, there are some films that are going abroad and going to other states and even to Canada that should be filmed here.
Very compelling numbers. Before we let you get away, something we've talked about before, Hanson Dam, the project that's been going on there, any updates on the Children's Museum that you've been working on?
The Children's Museum, we're trying to focus on an opportunity that's emerged recently. There's a Discovery Science Center in Santa Ana that does a phenomenal job, and we've initiated some conversations with them. I've just come from a committee meeting internally to get us to focus on that opportunity immediately and to see what comes out of that. If we could partner with the Discovery Science Center in something for the Children's Museum side, I think it would be a phenomenal opportunity for the city of Los Angeles, particularly for the people of the San Fernando Valley, with something that is well-established, a revenue-generating operation that meets the needs of that operation, and solve the problems that emerged with the Children's Museum organization. I believe it's something that we can do. It may take a little bit of time, but if everything runs smoothly, we may have an opportunity. We're also reaching out, by the way, to the California Science Center to see if there's some opportunity for a joint operation or something that they can contribute in the way of exhibits or other expertise. But we're not giving up on the idea of the Children's Museum. We think it's viable, we think we can do it, and we have seen some interest expressed by these parties.
We look forward to updates on the project. Thanks so much, District 7 Council Member Richard Alakon. Thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Take care.
You can listen to city council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to either the Van Nuys City Hall or the San Pedro City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend ending January 8th, 2010. On behalf of Michael Flynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the aftermath of a disaster, you may not be able to rely on your knowledge of your home. You might also not be able to rely on your guide dog. The dog may be injured, frightened, confused, panicky, and/or disoriented. Be prepared to calm your dog and to keep it confined and securely leashed and/or harnessed. If you use a king, remember to keep it readily available to assist you around hazards and obstacles. Keep a spare by your bed and at all exit doors, as well as a spare leash for the dog. Ensure that your guide dog is microchipped and that their license and identification tag have current contact information. Guide dogs can accompany you to an emergency shelter. Just as you need to prepare an emergency kit for yourself, you need to have one for your dog. Ensure you have enough water, food, any medications they may require, and a first-aid kit. A blanket or rug and favorite toy may help calm them as well. Keep your veterinarian's name and number in the kit. Vaccination records may be required at the shelter. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
Now is our time to work as one. To create something beautiful. To start again. To ease a burden. To provide hope where there was none. There's so many ways to create the good. What will you do?
Start creating the good by visiting iparticipate.org.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm a Ayahgar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste. Namaste.
(Music)
...and the recommendations on eight and nine, there's a request to continue both of those. Item number eight, request to continue that to February 12th.
All right, is there, members, any specials? And so we'll continue that item without objection.
And also on item number nine, a request to continue that to January 20th.
All right, item number nine will be continued without objection.
And that would leave seven before council.
And seven will be called special.
And then that would take council back to public comment, or, and also the card on item number one.
Why don't I take one first, and then we'll go back to public comment, because there's only one card in here. And, all right, we're going to go to item one now, very quickly. Arnold Sacks, are you present? Mr. Arnold Sacks, are you here?
Good morning, thank you, Arnold Sacks. Again, I'd just like to clarify that these liens that are being enacted, they're not felonies, they're not, there wouldn't be any court cases involved, there won't be any arrests for these people. These are zoning violations, like what happens with the billboards situation having a permit at LA Live. There would be no arrest. But I would like to concern, I am a little bit concerned about this part about graffiti abatement. I don't know if anybody's ever ridden the green line, but, the blue line, excuse me, the blue line. The, the fact that you can't miss the graffiti that runs from the 103rd Street Kenny Han Station to, I would say, the Florence Station, along about, that's probably a good two miles, is amazing. It's absolutely atrocious. Now, I understand it's a very difficult area to police, but you have a graffiti abatement. These people are being charged $8,000. I don't know what portion of that is for graffiti abatement. Why can't, you pick up the ball when it comes to the blue line? It took six months to have some curse words eradicated at the 103rd Street Station. Six months! Graffiti abatement. You're going to approve ordinances, you're working on ordinances, you have a graffiti abatement ordinance. Why not pick up the stick and carry out what you're supposed to do and eliminate the graffiti on those buildings? Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will close public comment on item number one. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. We have our general public comment. Again, I know there's a lot of folks who filled out cards for general public comment. We will be having public comment on item number seven, so this is for items that are not on the agenda, so this is not a time to discuss item seven, but it is for items that are not on today's agenda, and anybody who wants to waive that or move this over to item seven, just let us know when we call your name. William Ruspussen is our first speaker. William Ruspussen? Ruspussen? Nope, once, oh, there you are, sir. Yep. And after that will be Arnold Sacks.
I'm William Ruspussen.
All right, Ruspussen.
And thank you for your time, and it's a general comment that I want to say, I've had three visits here to this microphone and had a minute and a half to speak, and all that time, and it wasn't enough time. And, you know, I'm here to support change as far as the issue of seven goes, you know, I'm in support of that, although, I want to just tell you about myself. I'm a terminally ill patient, and I have several friends with me right here that had, although they weren't in my arms when they passed away, they were, they're with me today in spirit, you know, they're alive and they're dead, and I have the same disease they have, you know, so, you know, I'm right behind them, but if I knew what I knew now, you know, if I had the opportunity to give them the compassion that I get from the people who know who they are in the dispensaries and in the caregivers, then it would have made my life a lot easier, it would have made their life a lot easier, and I just want you to know that I'm standing here, not just for myself, but for people who couldn't stand, and I made it here on public transit, and it's a little difficult to be here, and I'm looking forward to some big change and some good change, and I appreciate your attention, and think about the next person, please.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments. Arnold Sacks is next. After that is Michael Hubman.
Good morning again, thank you, Arnold Sacks. You sound like you're suffering from a cold, Mr. President, I hope you feel better. I'd like to address again what happened last week with your vote and your welcoming of the new candidate, new councilman, Mr. Kerkorian. Having him involved in city business before he'd been sworn in to office. But then I thought about that, and I thought, you know what? That's not a bad idea. Maybe if you filibuster for a couple of years, and you go through another election, and then maybe a couple more years for another election, but you don't swear anybody in, then you wouldn't have to uphold any California laws. But in your case, instead of filibustering, I'd call it fartabustering, because normally what you do is just pass gas here. It's outrageous that there's no opinion on what occurs when somebody's sworn into office. Can they actually act on city council business before they are legally sworn in to their position? They ask questions, we know when we're talking off, we know when we're talking off the item, but council rules, here and there, same thing for holding a quorum. The rule was suspended. Is it suspended for each term of your office, Mr. President, or the president that's acting? Or is it suspended forever, which makes it not a suspension anymore? Inquiring minds would like to know. It's in the rules. You need to be in a turn, you need to be in the chambers, but it was suspended. How long? Make it legitimate. You did it with the, with the, the quorum detail, you changed the rules, you voted on it. It's in the record. It stands in the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Appreciate your comments, and we always need a quorum to conduct business, and we have a quorum here today, as all days when we conduct business, without a quorum, we cancel the meeting. Michael Hubman is our next speaker. After him will be Norman Welch. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Michael Hubman, and I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist. For three years, I've operated a charity where we provide bulk drinking water to the homeless people on Skid Row in Los Angeles. The city council this morning, I have a treat for each of you. It's a cool handout. This is a copy of The Catholic Agitator, It's Time for the End of the Drug War Edition. This magazine is published by our own Catholic worker who also operates the Hippie Kitchen. I don't have time to talk about the waste and destruction caused by the Hundred Year War on Plants and Molecules. This is the schizophrenic, high states, cat and mouse, or should I say cowboys and Indians game that has destabilized the neighbor on our southern border. We have a military base in Colombia. Here is my local take on the issue. For a long time, I have pondered why homeless people of Skid Row were, with their low-end financial resources, should be on the front line of local war on drugs. The answer recently came to me. The homeless people lack something that the rest of us truly take for granted. That is a door that they can get behind and close. By definition, homeless people live in a fishbowl of public visibility. Now, I know the city council does not make drug policy for the nation or the state, but you do have a chance to be progressive in the face of disastrous, repressive, and regressive public policy. Take a chance. I do hope you read this, and I hope you put it in the file for reference, and also I'd like to say that we should keep the people of Haiti in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you very much, and appreciate that very much. We'll make sure that one of the sergeants-at-arms gets that from you. Norman Welch is our next speaker, and after that is David Hernandez. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Norman Welch. I'm a resident of the Second District and medical marijuana patient, and I just want to express the hopefulness now, because for so long, I and everyone in the Second District were unrepresented, and now we have a new representative, and we're really hopeful, you know, we want to keep a line of communication, and we're glad to see you here. So I just wanted to welcome, welcome Mr. Kerkorian, and hope you'll listen to us as you always have.
Thank you very much, sir. And David Hernandez is our next speaker. After that is Frank Chaftel. Good morning.
Good morning, council members, and welcome to our newest council member. There's a saying, short-term gain for long-term pain. And I know, as a community activist and someone who has lived in Los Angeles since 1953, there is a lot of concern over the move toward privatization of the city's assets, the parking meter concession being one of them. I attended a meeting, and Councilmember Coretts was nice enough to attend on Sunday, with community leaders throughout Los Angeles expressing that very concern with regards to the privatization of the parking meters, and turning that concession over to a private party. But that concern also extends to the Los Angeles Zoo. When we had the extensive debates with regards to the elephant exhibit at the zoo, there was a slight undertone with regards to, this is a valuable city asset, and I agree with Councilmember LeBons that, yes, the Los Angeles Zoo is a valuable city asset, and that too should not be considered for privatization. And so, as someone who is staying involved in the community, and that will be participating on a very proactive level within the community, I want to just reemphasize the short-term gain for long-term pain, and as stewards of our public assets, we'll be looking to you for taking that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Frank Chaftel is next. After that is Deborah Stevens. Good morning.
Good morning. Good to be here. Mr. Kerkorian, it's great to see you here, and it's finally glad to have some representation for the Second District. You've hit the ground running, and I applaud you for everything you've done, and we look forward to working with you on a lot of things to get some things cleaned up in our district, and we know you're going to do good work, so congratulations and welcome to the horseshoe. Appreciate that. Appreciate all of you, looking forward to a good New Year and getting a lot of things done. There's a lot of things on our plate. Our city is facing a terrible budget crisis right now, and we need to look at that, we need to see what we're going to do to be able to continue to provide the services that we've become accustomed to and that we expect, but at the same time, you know, make sure that everybody is able to have their jobs, we're not laying people off, we don't have furloughs and other things like that. I also hope that we can get the medical marijuana... You look at everything and you listen to everybody. One of my concerns is that you've had a lot of people up here giving you... One of my concerns is that you've had a lot of people up here giving you information. You've had the building and safety department, you've had law enforcement, you've had planning department, but I've yet to see anybody from the collectives or from the patients to come up and actually give you some.
I'm sorry, sir, we can't talk about seven during public comments, so, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Cheftel. Appreciate your understanding. Deborah Stevens is our next speaker. After Ms. Stevens will be Patrick Weisman. Good morning.
First, I would like to say that our democratic process is alive and well in this city. I want to thank each and every one of you for making your staff available to listen to my views on the issue that I'm truly concerned and involved in. I am now going to speak on the California law that is now in effect in this state and not on the item that is on the agenda today. Many voters in this state voted for the California Compassionate Use Act, including myself. The reason I voted for that law was so that the people who truly need it could legally have access to it. The legislators that crafted that law placed conditions that are attached to that law. Therefore, as a resident of this city, I hope that this council will keep all of the conditions of the California Compassionate Use Act in the forefront of your minds to guide any future decisions that you make. Some decisions seriously affect people's lives, and the issue of medical marijuana falls into that category. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevens. Patrick Weisman is next. After Mr. Weisman is John Walsh.
Good morning, council members. First, I want to say thank you very much, okay, for welcoming me to your offices in the last two weeks. You definitely demonstrated democracy as it best. But remember, all I've been speaking about, okay, is I've been quoting, okay, things are in the municipal code book, chapter one. This is, when I said that this was the DNA, okay, of the city of Los Angeles, of the land use, it's got eighty years, okay, of laws, of things that have been, gone to court. So when you make your decision, you've got to make your decision, okay, following this book, chapter one of the municipal code. I, good luck, okay, in your decision today, and I'll see you around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. John Walsh is next. After that is Louisa Mavropoulos.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, L-A-N-D-S dot org. Fifty thousand hits per month since September. Will be online with our latest either later today or early tomorrow. Want to talk about body scanners. In fact, on our website, number one, the mayor exposes himself at LAX. He did a full body scan. If you want to know everything, really everything, about the mayor and how he exposed himself, including inches, read my blog. Ladies and gentlemen, the mayor wants to put body scanners down in this building. Now, who's going to kick off? Be the first body scannee. Do you now want to know how built we are? Do you want to know what our genitals look like? Is that what the mayor wants, as he made a fool of himself criticizing the President of the United States on, on the, under pants cape? Everyone saw that. He was the only mayor who went berserk. But ladies and gentlemen, remember, whenever I get upset, I take out one of these. But please, protect my right to be a criminal. Protect my right, because I am not sick. Protect my right to buy it on the street where it's a lot cheaper. It's cheaper on the street, and the quality is even better. And we'll make these medical marijuana pot industrial complex people wealthy with their phone, two hundred, the city of Los Angeles and Oregon have the same population. There are twenty-five thousand medical marijuana patients in Oregon. There are quarter of a million in LA. HollywoodHighlands.org. Find out what Matilda Salinas and Lou Leonard know about the mayor.
Thank you very much. Louisa Mavropoulos is our next speaker. After Ms. Mavropoulos will be Patricia Mendoza.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Neighborhood council elections are coming up in my community, Echo Park, Greater Echo Park Allee neighborhood council. For whatever reason, the information about the elections is not being distributed out to the public as it should be. I want to know why. Has it been done on purpose? Also, our neighborhood council held a parade December 12th. I know that they spent over $6,000, and a little over fifty people showed up. If you do the math, it shows that it cost $150 per person to watch this pearly plant parade. It was a bad planning and a waste of money. Now, in Temple Bouldery, some unknown to the community, nonprofit called the LA Land Trust wants to buy a property in Patton Street for a million dollars via grants. The land was under lien at one time. It belonged to the Boys and Girls Club, whose director, Carl, ran off with the funds over two years ago. We in the community have asked City One for accountability. We received no response. We got ripped off, and we have no answer. We are in a great recession. If the land is bought, who is going to pay for the requested equipment, the maintenance due to the budget cuts? We're saying that the city is poor, we're broke, but we have a million dollars to spend on an empty land and then put a pocket park or whatever it is that they're going to do with that land. Also, the outreach has been very poor to the community in regards to this pocket park. You see a few people that show up, but a few people do not represent the whole community of Temple Bouldery. For those people that have gone to the meetings, some of these people were coming in from Matwater, they were coming in from Eagle Rock, they don't live in Echo Park, they don't live in the Amity community. I think it's wrong. All I know is that back in the day, we got sold out from Vista Hermosa when Councilman Weezer was on the LAUSD. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Louisa. Patricia Mendoza is next.
We will hear that in just a moment. Translated after that, it's going to be Warren Branch, who is on deck. Thank you.
Ah, sí. Buenos días.
Good morning.
Me llamo Patricia Mendoza.
My name is Patricia Mendoza.
Tengo cuarenta y seis años viendo en Temple Bouldery.
I lived for forty-seven years in Temple and Bouldery.
Y lo que tengo a decir es nada que la verdad.
And what I come to say is nothing else but the truth.
Y el que le quede el cuello, hay ustedes.
And it depends on you.
Yo no estoy amargada.
I'm not bitter.
Estoy harta, cansada del abuso que pasa en nuestra comunidad.
I'm already tired of all the abuse that goes on in our community.
Batan a la juventud.
They kill our youth.
Mandan a todos los sexual abusos hombres a vivir allá.
All the men with sexual problems, they send them to live in our area.
Los directores de las escuelas lastiman a los niños y los humillan con los padres.
Principals at the schools, they hurt the children and they humiliate the parents.
Y nuestros concejal, Ed Reyes, con otros concejales sus impliados se ríen de uno.
And our councilman, Ed Reyes, and the other council members, they, and the staff, they laugh at us.
Los humillan.
They humiliate us.
Ayer en la noche me dijeron estúpida ignorante.
Last night, they told me that I was stupid and ignorant.
Un, un impliador y títere de el señor Alarcón.
One member of your staff, the staff of Mr. Alarcón.
Y quiero que se me respete como miembro del comité que representa a la comunidad.
I want to be respected as a member of the community that I am part of and the community that I represent.
Estoy de acuerdo que soy una estúpida. Allí sí estoy de acuerdo.
I am in agreement that I am stupid, yes, I agree with that.
Porque yo estoy en control en mi vida, en lo que yo hago en mi comunidad y la gente.
Because I control my life and whatever I do in the community.
Y yo tengo el poder reportar a todos ustedes de corruptos.
And I have the power to report all of you as corrupt.
Y están enfermos de dinero.
And you are sick due to the money.
Y tienen que hacer un cambio en esta comunidad, y espero ver algunos atrás de las rejas en la televisión.
You need to make a change in our community, and I expect to see some of you behind jail.
Y a mí ninguna americana.
Thank you very much. Warren Branch is our next speaker.
Nobody in the nonprofit is going to tell me and put me down. They're going to respect this Latina.
Warren Branch is our next speaker. We could ask, we could ask you the courtesy of the next speaker. Thank you. Warren Branch is our next speaker. If you'd give him the courtesy, please. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. Warren Branch is our next speaker. And after that is Dan Halbert.
Good morning, sir.
How you doing? My name is Warren Branch. I've been here for, say, about two or three times to talk.
If you don't mind, if you could get a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you better? Thank you so much, sir.
Talk to Chief William Parks about child molestation out there in the city of Pomona. I made them tell it all. The police officers asked me to join into it. The new chief of police officer told me, please don't get his officers arrested. I have proof. He go to minister, she's in it too. I've already made them all confess to what they're doing. If you think I'm lying, ask Mr. Parks. I want a big lawsuit, right here in the transcripts. If it don't be in arrest, it's going to be plenty more lawsuits too. And I just come here to ask, ask Mr. Parks to give me Earl Hutchinson's address and his phone number, where I can take him to the church, because the minister already confessed to it, to the police, to five probation officers. I made them tell it. They confessed to their crime. Pomona Police Department don't want to go out to the church to ask the minister about it, because they're in it. And if you think I'm lying, ask Mr. Parks right there. He'll tell you.
Thank you very much, sir.
So I'm here to, to get the address to Earl Hutchinson, so I can bring him to the church, so we can get these peoples arrested. Now, if you think I'm lying about the lawsuit that I, I want, it go right here.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the city of Pomona is outside of our jurisdiction, but we appreciate that.
I know. I'm coming for you to help, all right?
I know, but, but we just have to comply.
I come in to talk to Mr. Parks.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have to comply with state law on that. Thank you very much, sir. Dan Halbert is our next speaker, and then Dr. Clyde Williams will follow after that.
Thank you and good morning. First of all, I'd like to welcome the new councilman to our midst. I read online that you're a man of the people, and I really hope that's true. I know you defeated big money to get into your spot, so. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people on the council here that aren't really listening to the people, and we come here week after week trying to educate them on a very important topic, which is item number seven, and they just keep talking about things that don't make any sense. So we, the people, have decided to take this matter away from the council, and we're going to put it in front of the people. You people seem to forget that you are only representatives of the people, and the people have the right to decide the laws in the city. Your personal opinions don't matter. Seventy-five percent of the voters support us. Over the last month, we formed an alliance of over a hundred business owners with thousands of patients. We're going to use several tactics to get a fair ordinance. We're going to petition the people, and we're going to stop your final ordinance, and we're going to put ours up against.
I'm sorry, sir, because we're talking about the ordinance, can you save that for item seven, please?
This is a government of the people, by the people, for the people. This council needs to look at the way the wind is blowing. It is definitely going in our direction. I don't know who you guys think you represent. Those of you on the council who understand this issue, like Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Coretts, Ms. Hahn, do not allow these people to push through this ridiculous thing. And to join our organization, join the fight, it's thegap.com, G-A-P-P dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After Dr. Williams will be Cheryl Eickley. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, and medical marijuana doesn't make me much difference, because I lived in Berkeley from 1966 to 78, and no problem. Two forty-five. Ah, we would like to recommend that city council consider a two forty-five procedure for the forthcoming low-impact development proposal and ordinance that's being considered on Friday by the Board of Public Works. We assume it's going to be passed unanimously. Why? Low-impact development gives you the idea that you're actually doing something effective, sensible, practical, and various other adjectives, whereas in fact, if you have a typical, eh, say, two thousand square foot house, including parking, you're going to be generating roughly 750 gallons each rainfall. So that requires approximately ten, twelve, fifteen, fifty-gallon drums in order to be effective. The ordinance only requires four maximum. I have more than four. So in point of fact, it's just a piece of a very large picture called the Storm Water Management Program, which apro got started, which needs $50 per parcel per year, and if it's fully implemented, irrelevant as to the low-impact developments, it will take $500 million a year just to maintain and operate, clean everything, make sure it's working. So LIDS should be part of a much larger program and should be clearly identified as to where we're going from this, so that we don't wind up in the same fashion as the pension plans and the current funding crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Cheryl Eickley and Bruce Darian will be next in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Eickley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here to ask the city council to avoid making any sucker's choices, which is a decision or strategy to keep us off track. Sucker's choices are used in order to justify assorted behaviors in which we suggest that we're caught in between two distasteful options. Either we can be compassionate to a group of minorities, or, and the city would be endangered, or we can keep the city safe with thoughtful regulations, but by segregating a minority group of individuals. What makes us a sucker's choice is that it's always set up as the only two options available, which is the worst of either-or thinking. The people making the choice never suggest that there is a third option that doesn't call for unhealthy handling of ordinances. For example, maybe there's a way that we can have compassion and thoughtful ordinance. Perhaps we could keep a minority group safe and the community safe and not have any undue segregation of that minority group. Not only do sucker choices set us up to take ineffective actions, but they are, they close us down to change. They present our minds with problems that are easily solved with mirror restrictive thinking. After all, if, we are simply choosing between keeping a minority group safe and keeping a neighborhood safe, our neighborhood safe, we don't need any creative thinking. Sucker's choices are simplistic trade-offs that keep us from thinking creatively of ways to solve our problems, so that patients have, so that a minority group has the same rights as other groups, and the city remains safe without segregating that minority group. And so how can we break away from the perverted logic that keeps us trapped in this insensitive decision sucker's choices? Refuse sucker's choices by setting up new choices. Ask tougher questions, questions that turn the either-or choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eickley. Bruce Darian is our next speaker out in Van Nuys, then after that will be Kevin Glenn here back in council chambers. Good morning, Mr. Darian.
Good morning, city council members. I'd like to start off by congratulating Paul Krikorian on his seat on the council. As an Armenian, I would assume it's bringing great pride to the Armenian community in having Mr. Krikorian on the council, representing the Armenian community as well as all the people in Los Angeles. Being the first Armenian to serve the city of Los Angeles in the legislative branch, I welcome him and congratulate him. I'm here to express that I filed a petition for rehearing in the United States Supreme Court, cases zero-nine dash four oh five and four oh six, respectively, US Ex-Rald Darian versus Accent Builders et al. and US Ex-Rald Darian versus David J. Pasternak. The issues are complex and widespread, coming down to a single issue as to whether or not the United States is a plaintiff in a whistleblower action, which is known as a qui-tam action that the president I welcome him and congratulate him. I'm here to express that I filed a petition for rehearing in the United States Supreme Court, cases zero-nine dash four oh five and four oh six, respectively, US Ex-Rial Darian versus Accent Builders et al. and US Ex-Rial Darian versus David J. Pasternak. The issues are complex and widespread, coming down to a single issue as to whether or not the United States is a plaintiff in a whistleblower action, which is known as a qui tam action that the President Lincoln signed into law in 1863 during the Civil War. These matters do affect Los Angeles. They do affect whistleblowers around the country. And the issue that is being presented to the United States Supreme Court stems from a case that was decided in June of 2009 in US Ex-Rial Eisenstein versus the city of New York. He was a whistleblower with other city employees, and the case was dismissed on a jurisdictional issue by not filing his appeal within, what the court said had to have been thirty days instead of sixty days. And Ninth Circuit authority here in this part of the country, sixty days was the rule. That issue's before the Supreme Court right now, and I hope they'll take the case up. It stems from massive contracting fraud in California, which affects the city of Los Angeles. I hope that the city will do the right thing, as the legislative branch has no power to enforce the law, but certainly to work with the executive branch of the city in making sure that those laws are enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darian. Kevin Glenn is next. After that is Amanda Brazer.
I'll be back in a little bit, Ron. I gotta go hit the meter.
Good morning, sir.
Yes, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Kevin Glenn. I'm a member of the Miracle Mile Residents Association and a member of the Mid-City West Neighborhood Council. I'm also a public high school teacher in LAUSD these last twenty-three years, and I would like to encourage the council to take as strong as possible ordinance regarding medical marijuana. Quite simply, it's very, very difficult to teach children to begin with, particularly teenagers. My experience is even more difficult to teach children when a lot of them are stoned. And I have noticed here at the school that I've been teaching that there's a, we're noticing that a lot of marijuana is getting to the students. On-campus uses increasing. We have terrible truancy and ditching problems in terms of discipline and students' interest in what they're supposed to be learning. Market decline as we see more and more marijuana on campus. So I'm just going to encourage the council to take as tough a stand to protect our schools and our neighborhoods as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is Amanda Brazer or Brazen?
Brazel.
Brazer, excuse me. And then Patrick Duff, excuse me. Good morning.
And forgive me, I'm gonna be reading from my phone.
Okay, no problem.
I didn't have it for no last one.
Hey, save some paper.
All right. So thank you for taking my comments, and I really appreciate all the time and effort that this council has put into the medical cannabis ordinance. I work for Oxford University. I teach politics and history, and I think it's really important that we do a little bit of the history of marijuana prohibition. And I want to read to you some of the comments that were made on the Senate floor by Harry Anslinger, who's the father of marijuana prohibition. There are a hundred thousand total marijuana smokers in the U.S., and most are Negroes, Hispanics, Filipinos, and entertainers. Their satanic music, jazz, and swing result from marijuana use. This marijuana causes white women to seek sexual relations with Negroes, entertainers, and many others. The primary reason to outlaw marijuana is its effect on the degenerate races. This was actually spoken on the U.S. Senate floor in 1937, and that is what brought on our first marijuana law. Flash forward to 1972, when the Schaefer Commission under President Nixon concluded that marijuana's relative potential for harm to the vast majority of individual users and its actual impact on society does not justify a social policy designed to seek out and firmly punish those who use it. This judgment is based on prevalent use patterns, on behavior exhibited by the vast majority of users, and on interpretations of existing medical and scientific data. This position is also consistent with the estimate by law enforcement personnel that the elimination of use is unattainable. Unattainable. This is a futile war on marijuana. And if you think that marijuana is the problem, sadly, we've been duped. And it's racism that is the root of marijuana prohibition. It's not the safety of our children. It is racism against our minority populations. So I encourage you to do the right thing with this ordinance and not follow the Reefer Madness campaigns of the past. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patrick Duff is our next speaker.
Good morning. Actually, to kind of follow what you said, the DEA did a study in Hawaii, and they found out that the eradication of marijuana leads to the increase of use of crystal meth and cocaine in the public. And I'd like to say that yesterday, I was in Ralph's supermarket, and I used to have the Liberty Bell Temple and the Royal Temple of Zion, where it was a place for people to come and enjoy their time, play some chess, meditate, and get together. And I saw one of the patients that formerly went there, and it seemed he was addicted to crystal meth at this point. And I feel really, really bad because he came up to me and he said, you know, there's no place to go for him to go get his medication, and everything you're doing here is gonna strengthen that. It's gonna strengthen the drug cartels. It's gonna strengthen the crystal meth community, and it's gonna add to the degradation of our communities. So I'd just like to urge you to please think about maybe just allowing a free market to justify the amount of medical marijuana dispensaries, rather than allowing for what I see as racketeering by the city council. And the fact that Mr. Alakran said that you spent more time discussing the medical marijuana issue than the budget, and the fact that we might go into bankruptcy as a city this year, leads me to believe there's something much more behind your discussion of medical marijuana, like nepotism and getting your own friends and family members involved in different places. And I think it deserves an FBI investigation, because if you are to limit patients to one collective per patient, what you're doing is then you really are forming a racketeering. It's a RICO statute. And you've already done it to me over at 2823 Hyperion with no investigation, where the House of Kush opened up and just kicked the Liberty Bell Temple out, and the city council just put their heads down like they're sleeping in third grade.
All right, that will close our general public comment. We now will take up item number seven. Mr. Reyes, we have finished our public comment, and I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Planning and Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes, to open up our comments on item number seven.
We had a total of fourteen that were prior to our. Okay. Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, first, I want to thank you for your patience, and thank you for your focus on this item. I know it's a very emotional issue, but I also know that we have to move forward. As discussed in our last session back in mid-December, we wanted to offer you the ability to see maps that spoke to these impacts. And so since Monday, these maps were delivered to your office. We're hoping you had a chance to see what the impact will be when you talk about the five-hundred-foot buffer around sensitive uses and the thousand-foot buffer around sensitive uses. So those were the major issues that seem to have been discussed, the other concerns that were raised. But I was hoping that in this discussion, we can focus on being able to understand what these buffer zones mean, how it affects the city. But the goal here is to protect our neighborhoods, to clean up, and hopefully create an environment for our families to be able to live comfortably in their own community, while allowing for accessibility for those who are medically ill, who do need this medication, although some question what's their medicine or not. But we are in a position today to have that discussion. So I would ask the Planning Department if they could come to the center table and allow for Mr. Bell to give you a summary of what is in front of you. And I believe we have these maps in place, and we have the projection on the screen, Mr. Bell?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we'll have that projection, and again, we'll get a sense of what the impact is and hopefully bring this to vote. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. Alan Bell, Planning Department staff. We're preparing a very brief presentation and an overview of the packets that have been distributed to each of the council offices last week. Since December 16th, which was the last time that the council considered this issue, we prepared additional maps and technical analysis. Specifically, we tested the impact of six different alternative land use scenarios on the amount of acreage available to cite new medical marijuana collectives. We prepared these estimates on a citywide basis, as well as for each of the city's thirty-five community planning areas. Based on the language of the draft ordinance, which restricts the location of collectives near residential lots and uses, we assume collectives would have to locate neither the commercial or the industrial zones. The next slide shows the amount of acreage on a citywide basis that is zoned either commercial or industrial. And according to this particular graphic, the majority of sites are industrial, fifty-six percent, and around forty-four percent is commercial. You'll see that commercial sites are more evenly distributed throughout the whole city, whereas the industrial sites tend to congregate in a few major areas in the valley, east of downtown, and around the harbor. The second slide summarizes the citywide results of six different land use scenarios that have been tested. The big pie chart on the far left, that corresponds to the amount of acreage available on a citywide basis that is commercial or industrial. And then there are six scenarios. The top row is a scenario that analyzes the impact, putting a five-hundred-foot buffer around sensitive uses. And then we vary that three different ways. The first scenario is no buffer around residential. The second is a two-hundred-foot buffer around residential. And then the third is a five-hundred-foot buffer around residential. The upper right-hand pie corresponds to maps that have already been delivered to the council offices in December. The second set of scenarios is the bottom, and this looks at a one-thousand-foot buffer around sensitive uses we have not analyzed as heretofore. So this is the first time that we are presenting the results of this analysis. And then again, we test for this particular scenario residential three different ways: no buffer around residential, two-hundred-foot buffer around residential, and a five-hundred-foot buffer around residential. One of the things I would like to point out is that for each of these scenarios, we subtract out from the pie chart any commercial lot or any industrial lot that has a residential use on it. And there are about twenty-eight percent of the commercial lots are residentially used, and eight percent of industrial lots are residentially used. The size of the pie charts reflects a portion of the baseline, so that reflects why each pie chart goes down in size. So the upper right-hand pie chart, which is a five-hundred-foot buffer around sensitive uses with no residential buffer, that's around sixty-four percent of the citywide total. That's the least restrictive scenario. And then the most restrictive scenario is the lower right-hand pie chart, which is a thousand feet around sensitive uses and a five-hundred-foot buffer around residential, and that is twenty-six percent of the citywide total. In addition to analyzing these impacts on a citywide basis, we also analyze them on a community plan area basis. And we have for you right now a demonstration of the impact on the Hollywood community plan area. This demonstrates the impact of the available acreage, assuming a five-hundred-foot buffer around sensitive uses and a five-hundred-foot buffer around residential uses. These are the maps that were delivered to the council in December. Very few sites are available under this particular scenario. In terms of reading the maps, anything that is a dark blue represents a site, industrial site where you can locate, and anything that is a dark red represents a commercial site that is available. Everything else that is on the map that is not colored either a dark red or a dark blue would be a prohibited area, meaning that it is too close to a sensitive use or it is residentially used. The second slide, which we presented to you just a couple of days ago, looks at a different scenario, and this scenario is a thousand-foot buffer around sensitive uses but with no buffer around residential uses. And you'll see the difference between the two different scenarios. There are much more sites available under this particular scenario, many more sites that are zoned red as commercial sites, many more sites that are blue. What this demonstrates is that the key variable in this analysis is the impact of varying the residential standard. That has to do with the fact that our commercial sites include so many residential uses. So the more restrictive the standard is on residential, there is a dramatic impact in terms of the reduction of acreage that would be available. In addition to providing this analysis on the impact of these six different land use scenarios, we were also asked to analyze agricultural zoning. We have three agricultural zones in the city of Los Angeles. Approximately thirty-four thousand parcels are zoned agricultural across our plan areas. What we found is that of those thirty-four thousand parcels, only thirty are actually used for agriculture. That's less than one-tenth of one percent. The rest are used for residential uses. Primarily, these are large lot, single-family residences, even though they are zoned for agricultural uses. Just some general observations in terms of this analysis that we've conducted over the last month and a half. Again, the standard that seems to have the most impact on available acreage is the residential standard. The more restrictive the residential standard is set, the more of an impact there is on available commercial zoning. It would mean that there is far more industrial sites available than there would be commercial sites. One of the things that we heard is that as a policy, we would not want to have these only be situated in industrial zones. Another observation is that there are some scenarios mean that certain plan areas would not have any sites available, or very few sites available, to accommodate their fair share allocation of allowable collectives. One of the actions the council took was to cap the number of allowable collectives at seventy, and they would be distributed based upon the population size of each plan area. So it ranged from as small as one collective up to six collectives in the Wilshire Plan Area, which has the largest population. So one of the key tests of this analysis is whether or not a particular scenario will provide enough sites available to accommodate that fair share. And what we have found is that the four scenarios, the four pie charts on the right of this particular slide, those do not meet that particular test. In those particular scenarios, there are community plan areas that do not provide enough acreage available. The two on the left, a five-hundred-foot buffer around sensitive uses or a thousand-foot buffer around sensitive uses but with no residential buffer, those two scenarios do provide enough acreage in each of the plan areas to enable the citing of the seventy collectives that have been authorized in each community plan area. So that's a summary of our analysis, and we can take any questions that you might have in terms of the results that we presented today.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Again, colleagues, I know there's a lot of data, a lot of information, but again, you'll see that a vast majority of the residential areas are protected, given the number of sensitive uses, or should I say, types of sensitive uses that exist in the city. So we're protecting our schools, the buffer around schools, around our parks, around the residential functional areas that essentially allows us to protect at least eighty to ninety percent. the residential functional areas that essentially allows us protect at least 80 to 90% of the city in relation to where these facilities can be located. The question here is, what kind of buffer do we want to create? And the two that have been articulated and demonstrated through the maps have been the 500 buffer around sensitive uses, and there's a 1,000-foot buffer around sensitive uses. And so, again, I ask for us to move in a direction. I would propose that we move and consider the 500 buffer around sensitive uses, since it allows a level of protection that we have heard over and over again from a large number of our constituencies. So that would be a motion to establish the 500-foot buffer around sensitive uses.
Is there a second?
Second on that, anyone? Mr. Garcetti, seconds?
Thank you.
We're now on, colleagues, Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Weisar, Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you again, Mr. Reyes, for your work on this, and thank you to the public who's been so patient and who has really given a lot of advice from a lot of different perspectives that these council offices have listened to. Doesn't mean everybody's been able to meet with everybody, but while I would dispel the notion that we spent more time on this than the budget, we've probably spent 20 times more time on the budget, we have spent a lot of time on this, and I say that in a positive sense, that people have really burrowed into the details, wanted to look at the effect. The time we were able to spend over the break, and thank you to the Planning Department, who have just knocked themselves out to give us the data. I actually wanted to take up something Ms. Eichle said, and I think she was right. There's a false decision in a lot of the rhetoric that's before us, and one of the things I've tried to stay consistent with, I think, is in line with what you were saying, which is that we can't have safe communities and safe access, that, you know, we don't have to fall into stereotypes of reefer madness, and on the other side of the spectrum, we don't have to have the wild, wild west, not because it's about wild, wild west on drugs, but because... But because what a city should be doing right and does best is regulating land use. We're not regulating a state law. That is, you know, I welcome the state, I invite the state, I beg the state to have good regulation so we can have good and bad operators, so we can know who are legitimate doctors and who are not. I mean, that serves everybody in any industry. Take this away from the very kind of volatile rhetoric that goes around drugs. If this was the, you know, let's pick a random industry, if this was a retail industry and we were talking, again, as I come back off into about 99 cent stores, people have certain health standards, people have certain standards in terms of the hours of operation, people have the impact of noise and light on neighborhoods. That's what we have mostly focused on, and I think for the right reasons, because this law will change in the courts, these laws will change because the voters, both maybe at the local level and state level, have options. The legislature was considering something yesterday. What we need to do is regulate land use. Having looked at those maps, what I personally wanted to avoid was having mega dispensaries that I felt were going to be bad for patients and bad for communities because we limited them to four or five because we were so restrictive. But I also want to make sure we have the tools where there aren't 1,000 that are opening up without our ability to look at which ones are good and which ones are bad. And not because there's any conspiracy, and I certainly have no financial stake in any dispensary. This is about the constituents who have come to me, constituents with diseases and constituents who live in a neighborhood, constituents who have fears about getting access to their medicine, and constituents have fear that the city doesn't regulate land use anymore. And if we pass something, and when we pass something, we will be able to take a step forward. So the reason I seconded Mr. Reyes's motion is if you look at the actual numbers and you look at the maps, there's two potential bad roads we'd go down. If we, right now, 90% of residential areas are already protected, and that's really important for people to hear, as is, regardless of whether residential is sensitive use or not, I want to make sure the adjacency issue is spelled out, and I think we need some definitions really clear. The city attorney and the, could maybe come forward and help us there so that we're talking about adjacent alley, catty corner. Beyond that, the sensitive uses, which shouldn't include residential, we don't usually include that as a definition, it would be a new precedent, I think, in land use in general. We then need to say around sensitive uses, what should this be? Now, we acknowledge to some degree this is symbolic, because 500 feet and the difference between 500 and 1,000 feet, 500 feet is about 3/4 of a block, so it's not that you're driving it someplace else. It's still on the same block, essentially. But what it does allow us to be able to do is to have some good spacing of this, to be able to make sure that there isn't something right across from a school. We know across from Hollywood High School, Mr. LaBonge and I share that area, that there is a cigarette shop that was right across the street selling cigarettes. It's not that kids won't be able to be someplace where they see cigarettes sold, but that was a bad thing, and state law and city law prohibit that from happening. So that is a good use of land use, to be able to shut that cigarette shop down and say, you know, open up someplace down the block or away, so it's not the thing that kids see every single day. Putting something that's at 500, I think, when I looked at the numbers, what we would have is essentially about, I think, of the ones that opened under the law, the pre-Ico ones, somewhere around that 70 to 79 number would be open. That's not to say that there shouldn't, couldn't be a few additional ones under what we've put in the 130 or 139 ceiling, but that hits the mark of where we wanted to be. And all I've been trying to do for the last two iterations of this is hit the mark that we all already agreed on, that the number should be about 70 to that 100, up to 139. If we pass something which the number is actually 5, but we pretend it's 70, shame on us. If we pass something where it's really 1,000 and we're pretending it to be 70 to 139, shame on us. This is what hits the mark. That's the hard work and the maps that Mr. Reyes put forward, so that's why I would ask colleagues to support that. Maybe the city attorney could help us on the language for the adjacency. I don't know if somebody from the city attorney, Mr. Carter, or somebody else wants to come up. Mr. Carter? Could you, would you be able to help us with the language, or I don't know if you, previous to our meetings, have language on how to define clearly, and the Planning Department may too, on adjacent to, so that we can have a clear definition that is, we had some concerns from council members that were legitimate about making sure catty corner across alleyways were covered as well?
William Carter for the City Attorney's Office. If I may, I know Jane Usher is in the audience somewhere, maybe in the back. If you would permit me to get her, because she has been specifically working on this particular issue. I'm sorry. Excuse me for one moment, I'll get her.
Okay. And just in closing, because I'm over, colleagues, I'll press my button again. I think the game plan moving forward today is to vote on that final direction to the ordinance, to bring the ordinance back Tuesday. I thought we could do it Friday, but I think Tuesday is the best way to do it on a regular meeting, so public could come. We'll have the public comment today after we decide what we're voting on, so that the comments you can give, you can see what the final idea of the ordinance is, give us that information before the ordinance comes back. And then, if we had a first reading this coming Tuesday, a week later, a second reading, that's when we would have this in place. So the only question I'd ask, and I'll sit down, was just about getting clear language on protections for residences, be they apartments, homes, or I support Ms. Perry in terms of commercial, industrial stuff that's used as residential, that would prohibit anything from being just next to it. And that means catty corner, across an alley, or next door. Could you suggest some language, man? What language to get that?
Very good. Council President Garcetti, Jane Usher, and Sharon Seedorf-Cardenas from the City Attorney's Office. I hope you have the new Blue Line version. If you turn to page nine with us, just two paragraphs down from the top, you'll see a paragraph that begins with B as in boy on page nine. And here would be the residential language. So it includes lots that are abutting, across the street or alley, having a common corner, and it's not only with a residentially zoned lot, it's also with a lot improved with a residential use, which would capture those mixed-use buildings.
Great. Thank you. I'm done, Dennis. Dennis, I'm done.
I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you. I first want to clarify process, because I was under the impression we are following a certain path, and I'm quite surprised today at the ordinance I see before us. I was under the impression that we had a draft ordinance and that we had proposals, and we were voting yes or no, and those that we voted yes were being put into the ordinance, and that today we are going to come back and vote on the 1,000-foot radius or not, or any other issues that come up, and add that or change that in the ordinance. I was ready to vote before the holidays. I thought we could have voted that and moved forward, but some folks thought we should wait till today. But now we got an ordinance that we just got right before this meeting, that has a number of other things in there that, but that's not the process that we started off with. So now there's a number of new things in this ordinance that we may or may not agree with, and we have to now go back and pull them off. We're not following the same process we started with. For example, I see a number of things in this ordinance now that I disagree with. Am I now supposed to come back and say, let's pull that out, as opposed to the other way, let's put it in? We're changing the rules of the game here in terms of the process that we're using. So let me, let me ask your city attorney, who brought the ordinance to us. How did that come about? Why do we have a number of new things in the ordinance that weren't on here when we left before the holiday season?
Councilman Jane Usher, maybe we're overly optimistic, but we brought you something that I'll call cleaned up, but let me tell you the substantive changes. And we brought it to you cleaned up in the hopes that perhaps something could move today, but we understand that won't happen. And that's just as well, so that everybody has a chance to look at it. We really went through the priority order of collectives, so that the order of building and safety had to follow for determining whether they complied with all of the sensitive use and distance requirements. We'd know what that order is. So it's provision C of point two, priority order. You'll see a lot of blue there, we did a lot of changes. That's one. The second is, Councilman, just as you said, the distance from sensitive uses and the distance from residential. And you'll find that also blue, and that's on page, largely on page nine. The one other thing that we did that wasn't, if you will, a technical or a cleanup of that nature, the one other thing that we did, you'll find in maximum number of collectives. And you'll see a lot of blue there. It begins on page three, it continues over to page four, and what we're trying to figure out is how to reconcile the caps, the even, roughly even distribution among community plan areas and the population that we're going to distribute by. It's technically tricky, we simply want to meet your intention there. And then, Councilman, let me take you to one last paragraph, and it would be the only other thing that I'd like you to look at as being substantively new. On page four, under the full paragraph number two that begins at the, near the top of page four, these are the preregistered locations that existed underneath the interim control ordinance. And these are the standards, there are now five of them, that those locations, those operators would have to meet in order to participate as a priority going forward, trying to register, trying to comply. So there are now five standards, and those I need you to look at quite carefully, because those have been amended, those have changed.
Okay. So, Mr. President, you're suggesting, in terms of process, that we vote on the distance requirements today and then have a full ordinance for the first reading next Tuesday? Is that correct, what you're proposing? It would give us and our staff enough time to review these. But with that, I would ask the City Attorney's Office, if you could come back to us and tell us what language you actually cleaned up in terms of what we voted affirmatively to put in the ordinance, and secondly, any new items that we didn't take a vote on, but that you would need us to look at to make an opinion upon, because any slight word changes, anything else that happens could change things drastically. So we want to make sure we're voting for what we intend, no matter what we believe.
So, Councilman, the answer should be, but we're going to have time to look at it, the answer should be, everything that's in blue in front of you is new, anything not in blue was in front of you previously.
Okay. But there's also a difference between those things in blue. There are some things that are clarifying language for what we voted on, and there are some things that are new that we hadn't said before.
Very good.
Right? So that's what I'm saying. I'm asking you to highlight those two different items, so that we're very clear. Oh, we voted on this, but they're just clarifying and giving us the legal language versus this is a new idea that the council hasn't voted on.
Easily done.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Weisar, Mr. LaBonge, followed by Mr. Alakon, Mr. Reyes. Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bell, from the Planning Department standpoint, with your report that you gave minutes ago. Let's take Hollywood Boulevard from its inception at where Virgil and Hillhurst meet and go west of Vermont. Right now, there is a, on your map, a establishment on that part of Hollywood Boulevard. Now, that is in a C-zone, but is it adjacent to residential?
No. What that shows is it's a collective, it shows it's a collective that does not meet the distance requirements. I mean, it does meet the...
Okay, I got it. So why do you think that one doesn't? I know, I don't know of any school right in the area. I know there's a fire station up the street, 35s, I know there's the art gallery. Why do you think it doesn't? Because it's in our zone?
No, it meets the distance requirements, but what we did was, we assumed that that, because it met the distance requirements and separation standards, that it could stay at that location. And then, because there's an ordinance standard that says you can't be within 1,000 feet of another collective, then we subtract out any of the commercial acreage. So you'll see on that map, there's a slight amount of commercial acreage that falls just outside that 1,000-foot buffer.
Right. Now, is the Planning Department suggesting that we delete the residential requirement?
Absolutely not. What we have shown on these maps is any commercially zoned parcel that has residential use on it, we didn't show that because it doesn't meet the ordinance standards.
Right. In older parts of Los Angeles, there's challenges because of strip zoning, if you could say it's not like other parts of Los Angeles, which was developed many, many years later, whether it's Melrose Avenue, which has narrow commercial and then comes right into residential, or these parts of Hollywood Boulevard. Would that prohibit any collective to be on Hollywood Boulevard, basically, between Western and Hillhurst? Would the ordinance prohibit that?
Well, it depends on the individual locations, but looking at that, looking at that site, because Hollywood Boulevard has a lot of residential uses on it, it would be problematic for that. Again, because we subtracted out any site...
Is there any other role upstairs in planning or over building and safety that could figure this out a little bit, because I think it's, we've discussed this before, and I understand the whole ordinance and some of the keys that are going in there, but that someone could be the person who would be able to determine, you know, whether or not there's an availability, because we are going to condense the number of collaboratives in the city of Los Angeles, but maybe there's some reason why there should be one there because of the older established street, just from a planning use, not from a, from a use of, what the use is, but you don't have any existing uses that make it difficult. How, I'm just trying to find a solution to some of these narrow zoned areas in the area that I represent.
Well, it just depends upon how the ordinance is structured.
Right.
Again, what we have shown is that there are different scenarios and different impacts...
But if I have a bar on Hollywood Boulevard there, is that a sensitive use?
No, it's not listed as a sensitive use.
Okay, but a collaborative is.
Yeah, a collective. What the ordinance is trying to do is make sure that we don't have too many collectives next to each other.
I got that.
So there's a 1,000-foot spacing requirement.
I got that. My time's over, I want to maybe talk to one of your other planning officers there, just to try to figure the thing out from the sense of how we do that, because I have sometimes more problem with establishments that operate into the night, and they have noise, and they have no parking, et cetera. So we'll discuss. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. Mr. Alakon, followed by Mr. Reyes.
I came today ready to vote on what I thought was going to be presented. And what I thought was going to be presented was a 1,000-foot buffer on residential uses, which was our last discussion, and had an ordinance been drafted, it would have included a 1,000-foot buffer on sensitive uses. I introduced that motion, and I'm passionate about it, and I will not vote for anything that has anything less than 1,000 feet on sensitive uses. Secondly, I thought we were going to come in with a variety of amendments on the issue of how close to residential. And I'm very disappointed that we're eliminating the, anything except for abutting, which could be 10 feet or 1,000 feet, depending on what is next door. But I hold that the principle is, how close should it be to someone's house? How close should it be to someone's home? And I'm saying 500 feet is a reasonable separation between medicinal marijuana and a home. I would like to add that I'm fine with the language that includes exemptions for licensed residential medical or elderly care facilities. That is not on your map, but there are hundreds, if not thousands, of those facilities that would qualify. would qualify. So we keep focusing on the acreage and the maps that don't even include the number of elderly care facilities or licensed residential medical. And that's going to expand the pool greatly. So I think I want to move in counter to, with all due respect, because this is a very personal decision that each of us is making, and I hope we all respect our opinions on this. But I, with all due respect, would like to introduce a motion that we leave in the 1,000-foot buffer around sensitive uses and add a 500-foot buffer for residential. The draft ordinance was going to include a 1,000-foot buffer for residential. So this is a 500-foot give-back to those who would advocate more. And I think 500 feet is reasonable. I don't want anybody telling me that they have one of these things moving in next door, or, you know, within a few feet. And those are the phone calls we're going to be getting. And, you know, I've joked a little bit, and I've said, "Look, we got to start small and grow it right." You got it? Start small, grow it right. Because this can blow up. And who is going to be affected if it does blow up? But the industry itself. And that's why, if we do it correctly, I believe it will have the greatest opportunity to do it in the way that is consistent with the law and protects our neighborhoods. And if the law changes, you know, to make it more liberal, I voted for liberalization of marijuana use when I was in the legislature, and I'll support it. But this is, I think, most consistent, what I am proposing, I think, is most consistent with the current law. And I support those people with their efforts to expand an understanding in the state of California, what people really want. Believe me, we would love to have that, so that we don't have to make these kinds of decisions. But right now, the law is what it is, and my interpretation is that it is best suited at 500 feet to protect residential and 1,000 feet on sensitive uses, allowing for residential facilities, which I think are the most appropriate place to test the law than the model. And I think that we can accomplish all those things if there's support for my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon.
Can I get a second?
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, I would just ask Mr. Carter that, when the next revision is completed, if we can at least have two days to review the document, not the day of the meeting, that would be very, very much appreciated. Thank you.
No other speakers on the queue? Mr. Reyes? Mr. Garcetti? Do you want public comment now? Pardon me? Mr. Garcetti?
The idea here is, because the public keeps coming back and having to do a second visit to respond to something we do two seconds after they talk, let us continue doing amendment work. This is essentially amendment work. If we feel like that's the package, then they can comment, having just heard what they think those numbers are to be. Otherwise, it just doubles their time here. It creates another public hearing, et cetera. And as long as that's consistent, we're not voting on an ordinance today. So they will have the chance to give us public comment on a final ordinance come Tuesday.
Ms. Hahn?
I mean, I understand what you're saying. It seems to me, though, you want to hear the public comment before we take a vote on--
Well, we will.
I mean--
And I was trying to be--
I know what you're--
And I know that's a pause. I was trying to be as clear and as generous to the public that that's actually what would happen. This vote is not a final vote, in any sense. What you want is to be able to tell us before a Tuesday vote, after knowing where the council's going to go.
Yeah, I think I would also like to hear what they have--
I'm finding--
I'd like to hear what they have to say about the buffer and the sense of use, too. That would be my preference. But that would be my preference.
We have a number of cards from the public, and if that's the direction of the council, we will proceed in that manner. Dan Halbert, one minute each. We probably have about 50 cards here. We have approximately 50.
Thank you. Every time we come here, you guys try to put off public comments, so that we never get to speak on this issue. I just want to talk about the lies you guys tell about medical marijuana. You know, back when there was 187 stores, everything wasn't great. With only 187 stores, that causes a lot of people to have to go to one store, which causes $10,000, $20,000 a day worth of business. That creates profiteering, which you guys say you're against. You overexaggerate the number of dispensaries, and you call us profiteers. Have you ever thought that maybe the economy out there, people are just looking for a way to stay alive? When we run a job, when we hire people, we get 200 people responding because there's no jobs out there. You say we're helping the black market. Actually, having responsible dispensary owners dispense the product, keeps the stuff off the black market, keeps it out of the hands of schoolchildren. And so you just keep distorting the facts to try to scare people into closing us down. We just want to provide safe access to our--
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mike Oliveri? Mike Oliveri?
My name is Deborah Stevens.
Well, where's Mike Oliveri?
Mike Oliveri just texted me, and so that he was unable to come, and he asked if I could speak--
No, you can't speak on this behalf, ma'am. Just draw the card. We'll let you speak on a card. He's not here, then we're going to pass on to the next one.
Okay. Excuse me, but--
Ma'am, we're going to let the cards come as they are. Thank you. If you want to speak, draw the card. We'll bring you up at that time. Kim Neverman?
Good morning, counsel. I myself looked at a couple of these planning areas, and I'm surprised Mr. Rosendahl, Ray, and Kane, because of what they did in Venice. Where are all the sick people that live in Venice supposed to be able to go to get their medicine? And a few other of the planning areas. You know, you've got dirty bookstores next to people's houses. You've got bars next to people's houses. You've got liquor stores next to people's houses. My God, are we that much worse off? We're trying to help people. We're not putting dirty movies into their minds. We're not getting them drunk. We're not doing all these other nasty little things that bars, dirty bookstores, and all of that do. But they can be next door to a house, so what's the big deal? If you're going to do one immorality, do them all. But we're not immoral. We're ill people. Why should we have to come down to Fifth and San Julian to get our stuff? And that's exactly what will happen.
Barry Kramer? Barry Kramer?
Hi, counsel. Thank you very much for listening to me today. I'm Barry Kramer. I'm a resident of the city of Los Angeles. I'd like to speak about another Reefer Madness issue that's in this ordinance, and that would be the mandatory testing. I understand the need for testing. I think that's something that down the road, we really want to look into and have, but we're really not set up for it. The state, the city, no one's really set up for that testing quite yet. And quite honestly, it's a bit of a Reefer Madness fear issue. If we look at the facts and see how many deaths have been attributed to pesticide-laced marijuana since 1997, when this was passed, let's just take it from then, the number is zero. And if you want to know how many illnesses are related to pesticide-laced marijuana, the number is zero. So you're putting in something that we have to come into compliance with, that really is just based on fear and not really based in factual public safety issue. So I'd ask you to look at that carefully. Thank you.
Steve Martinez?
Thank you. I'm an activist out of the San Fernando Valley. I don't think a minute's enough for me to say concerning, since you're going to be redoing this on Tuesday. So I will speak my mind on Tuesday, but I can say is, I see that many of the council members here are really fully looking at this issue. Many of the parents and the parents and students that I work with are very concerned. The issue's meeting the middle school and the high school students in the valley. So I really look at all of you and say, "Look at your conscience concerning the restrictions, concerning these clinics." I'm not against the medical use, but I am against the dangers to some of our youth who think it's a thing to do. And that's where I see many of you are looking at. Thank you.
Boris Skol? Boris Skol? Sokol? Boris Sokol? Richard Eastman?
Distinguished Los Angeles City Council, Richard Eastman, former HIV Commissioner, County of Los Angeles, person with AIDS, one of the founders of medical marijuana here in Los Angeles. Mr. Kerkorian, welcome to the L.A. City Council. Welcome to Medical Marijuana Part 14 Years. You know, the L.A. Weekly got a big headline last week, "Weed Takes Rid in America," and New Jersey became the 14th state to legalize medical marijuana. And I've been coming before this board for 14 years, living with HIV and AIDS, and I just got back from Washington, D.C., with Councilman Rosenbaum, who marched with me in the Gay and Lesbian Equality March. And, you know, this issue could be ended with rescheduling of medical marijuana, and that's what we asked Nancy Pelosi. So I'm asking you today to continue safe access to medical marijuana in the great city of Los Angeles, and allow my friends with all the illnesses, AIDS, cancer, glaucoma, multiple sclerosis, to get this life-saving medicine such as myself. I have 600 T-cells now, undetectable for five or six years. It's insane that you keep fighting this.
Lenny Fisher?
Would you deliver this to the council people, please?
Lenny Fisher?
Good morning, counsel. I would also like to address part of this Reefer Madness issue that's taking place. Last time we were here, Councilmember Smith made a comment toward the end of the meeting about how these collectives are crime magnets. However, back in Plum, back in September, and I reviewed the records, the now chief of police, who was at a commander or deputy chief, testified that the LAPD does track crime spikes. And his words were, "There's good news, there's bad news." These collectives do not seem to attract any additional crime. Councilmember Smith has consistently ignored his constituents. I know many people that have made trips to his office, have called him, and gotten his back turned on them. So I'm asking you, council members, to really think about what's taking place here and what we're--
Thank you, sir. Steve Corchacho? Corchacho? Steve, is that you coming up? Okay, thank you.
City Council, Steve Corchato. I don't understand something. The patients voted in a set of rules and regulations. Why is it our opinion doesn't count anymore? And I'm glad it's finally being done, something, anyway.
Yes, sir. Arnold Sachs? Arnold Sachs? Following Mr. Saxby, David Lizama, then Norman Welsh. No, after Mr. Sax, sir.
Thank you again. Sworn to uphold the state constitution. That's your job. State constitution says sale is not allowed. I hear all this discussion regarding distance, numbers, this, that, the other thing, but I hear no discussion on the actual selling of the product. Are they collectives, or are they cooperatives? Cooperative in a 1030 L.A. Times editorial, "Cooperative: Democratically Controlled Operation Where Profits Are Shared By The Members Who Also Take Their Patrons." Collectives facilitate transactions between numbers who are legally entitled to grow their own marijuana. The prescription or the cooperative identification is what needs to be done. And as far as buffers, the eastside extension of the Expo line both run trains within 500 feet of high schools and junior highs, and there's no concern about the safety of the children there.
David Lizama?
Thank you, City Council. Happy New Year. I guess the Reefer Madness does continue here. You know, I want to know how many of you city elected leaders have medical degrees? Because very often, I hear opinions voicing as to who are legitimate patients, who are seriously ill, who actually need this medicine. And I want to ask you, because none of you have X-ray vision, none of you can see what these patients actually need this medicine for, none of you have actually gotten the medical knowledge to my satisfaction. I do realize there are some of you who are pretty much on top of this, but a lot of the rhetoric still speaks of this as being a social ill, something that has to be kept from the public, that we are a nuisance, that we are something, an ill part of society that needs to be brushed aside. We are patients. We are sick.
Thank you, sir.
We need your help, and we deserve your respect.
Thank you, sir. Cheryl Schuman? Cheryl Schuman?
I wanted to thank City Council. My name is Cheryl Schuman. I'm the Executive Director for Beverly Hills Normal, the National Organization for Reform of Marijuana Law. Thank you to the council that supports medical marijuana patients. I am a legal medical marijuana patient and a cancer survivor. I've spent the past three years having seven surgeries and have found out recently that my tumors have spread to my liver and is inoperable. Because I am a legal medical marijuana patient, I have also found that my liver transplant will not be granted because I am a medical marijuana patient. So I stand here today as someone who's going to die, because City Council and other legislative members can't clarify the laws for people like me. I wanted to also thank all of the people out here who are activists. There is this rumor that everyone's profiteering. I, myself, am a volunteer. I know that many people here are volunteers and don't get paid a dime to stand up for patients' rights. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Amanda Brazer? Amanda Brazer? Folks, the more time that you take, the less time you're going to be able to speak. Amanda Brazer?
Thank you. In 1988, the DEA's own administrative law judge, Francis Young, concluded, "In strict medical terms, marijuana is far safer than many foods we commonly consume. Marijuana in its natural form is one of the safest therapeutically-substantive active substances known to man. If cannabis is safer than most commonly used foods, consumed foods, why do we have to have such restrictive land uses in terms of our sensitive uses and our residential uses? This is really insanity." And so to pass excessive land use restrictions, as Alarcon suggests, is to continue the Reefer Madness campaign that continues the discrimination and racism that these drug policies are based upon. And women like Cheryl Schuman are sentenced to death by our laws against drugs. And this is really not acceptable. Really not acceptable. We should be focused on crime that is violent, that we are afraid of, and not these policies that help. I mean, you have an opportunity to help sick people here. Do that.
Thank you. Heather Boswell? Heather Boswell? Heather Boswell? Followed by Heather Boswell will be Patrick Duff.
Hello. My name is Heather Nicole, and I'm here today because I am a medical marijuana user--
Are you Heather Boswell or Heather Nicole? You Heather Boswell or Heather Nicole?
I'm Heather Boswell. Nicole is my middle name. Excuse me.
Okay. Go ahead.
I am awful alive today because of medical marijuana. And if you take away my right to dispensaries, I will have to put myself into a hospital, because I will not be able to stay sane. because I will not be able to stay sane. I have manic depression. No, please. I have, puppy, relax. I have manic depression. I have a service animal, so that I do not have to take anxiety pills to save my life. Puppy, relax. This is a new situation for him. Anyhow, please, allow me the right to be in L.A. and get dispensaries. I can't. Gardena has a moratorium. I have to drive to L.A. Or the Care Collective and CRC, they have kept me alive. Please, allow me to live and not have to go to the hospital.
All right. In the Community of Sherman Oaks, I've been there for about two and a half years. I've had a collective there for two and a half years. Right next to me is a bar. On the other side of me is what they call Meeting House. The Meeting House has N.A. and A.A. meetings there. And behind us is a school, Dixie Canyon School. Now, this Meeting House, as court-ordered, N.A. people have to go there, but it's considered a Meeting House, so it can be near this school. And next to that is another place, Maria's Kitchen, that serves alcohol. So on the same block, you have four people that serve alcohol, an N.A. and A.A. place, which is really great to have next to people who serve alcohol, and you have a liquor store over on the corner that's next to the school. All these things are next to the school. Nobody cares about that. Nobody's putting anything about alcohol with children, which actually kills people. But, secondly, in Atwater Village, okay, right down the street from where Mr. Garcetti said all the dispensaries were, there's a place where children have to cross the street that they made the game Frogger after. Right at Hyperion, where it turns into Glendale, they made the game Frogger because kids get killed there every day.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Dan Lutz. I'm the President of Los Angeles Collective Association. I'm basically asking you all to just end this war on drugs. You know, it's been far too long for us to continue down this line. You want to put a cap of 70 collectives. If there's 500 collectives out there, that's 500 families that have started businesses. We don't want to be squashed. We want to continue. We want to be of service to our communities. Please don't end it this way. I just implore you, reconsider that. Thank you.
Jessica Chile. Jessica Chile. No, Jessica?
Jessica.
Oh, there she is.
Good morning, Council. Thanks for hearing all of us today. I wanted to discuss limitations that are in the ordinance regarding how many collectives a member, a person can be a member of. It's important that patients can be members of more than one collective because of different types of medicine that are available in different places. You may have to seek out a specific medicine for your condition, and you may not be able to get that one at the closest dispensary to you. You also might be on the other side of town if you need medicine. It's important for you to be able to go there as well. So I'd just like you to consider that. I'd also like to bring up Mr. Ahlakon's point. I don't understand why he wants to put a residential buffer in that's so large, and why he would want to keep that away from elderly and residential, elderly and homes for disabled people. It should be closer to them, not further away. Thank you.
Oliver Summers.
Good morning. There's an old saying, "Too many cooks in the kitchen spoils the broth." And right now, we're all eating a big old bowl of bad broth. It's 2010. We're still sitting here talking about this. I've been coming here since 2006, and I'm hearing the same rhetoric over and over again. Let's think long-term, not short-term. You put the cap on, you put the, you get rid of the residential, you put the sensitive use in there, all of a sudden, you're not going to see 50,000 clubs on one block. You're not going to see green crosses and pot leaves all over the place. You're going to see us doing our thing back to normal, the way it was two, three years ago. I'm starting to lose count myself because it's so long into this. So just think long-term, people. If we add in this residential thing right now, it's just going to add in a huge mess that we're going to have to deal with again in three years when we come back to redo all of this. Get rid of that sensitive use to the residentials. It's pointless. Let's keep all of our regular sensitive use areas in place. We'll all be good, and we won't be eating the bad broth.
Thank you. Yami Bolados. Yami.
Happy New Year, everybody. My name is Yanile Bolanos. I am President of the Greater Los Angeles Collectives Alliance in Los Angeles. I'm also the patient operator for Pure Life Alternative. We've been operating for almost four years. We're 139 feet from a school. We've operated with no problems, no complaints, and very responsibly. I'm here to tell you guys that it doesn't matter where you are, it's how you run your collective that matters. This law was made for the patients, and you guys are forgetting the patients here. I have 19 patients over the age of 80 that live in my neighborhood, and I have a question for Mr. Ahlakon. How is a liquor store that provides liquor and cigarettes to minors? And how is a topless weed bar better than us? Please tell me that. We're trying to serve our community. We're trying to help the patients. Please remember that when you're voting. Thank you.
I'm not going to say much, but all I can say is, this is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous. This is a city. You can't have your residential? Might as well run us out of town. Put us on the reservation, stick us in the back of the bus. Thanks to those who are supporting us, but to those who are not, stop it. There are more holes in this law than Swiss cheese. Thank you.
Ala Shermo.
Did you say John Walsh?
Not John Walsh, no.
Hello, City Council members. In February 2008, there was a wave of DA letters, very threatening, that said that it's going to seize landlords' properties. Landlords got very scared. Landlord asked us to move, and we had to comply with landlord's wish because he wasn't going to renew the lease. He called DA, he screamed that, and said, "You have six months, and you have to throw them out." It was a scare tactic. Please reconsider and let us apply as part of 186s. It's not our fault. So since we are part of 186s, and we were misfortunate to be victims of DA letters, we shouldn't be victims again. Thank you.
Jim Anderson.
Mr. President, I apologize for not wearing my kilt, but those wands are cold. You won't give us credit for being elected officials.
I understand, Jim.
So warm up the wand.
Not everyone understands what you're talking about, but I do.
Jim Anderson, Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council. Senator Ahlakon, we support the 1,000-foot buffer. I have questions for planning as to why all the red areas were lumped in West Hills and Woodland Hills and not in Winnetka and Canoga. Why is Warner Center whited out on the map that you propose? Are we exempt in Warner Center from any of these things? Thank you, and good day.
Thank you. Looks like Dell Smith. Your first name, sir?
Duke.
Duke, okay.
Duke Smith. I thought you knew that.
Well, I couldn't tell by your spelling.
Okay. Well, I'd just like you to know, I thought you guys were going to pass something. I haven't came here for many of the council meetings because you guys have been so completely impotent. And I told you two years ago when you passed the moratorium that you'd done too much, too little, too late, and you said you hoped I was wrong. Well, Mr. Ahlakon, I'd like to show you, if you don't think it's blowing up, this is what blowing up looks like. This is what blowing up looks like. Two years of incompetence out of you folks.
Thank you, sir. Michael Levitt. Mr. City Attorney, has a comment on this?
The members of the public should direct their comments to the council as a whole.
To the council as a whole. Happy New Year. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm Michael Levitt. I represent the patients of the San Fernando Valley. I come here today to explain to you that putting zone buffers and all of that isn't what we need. Having, where the location of the dispensary is, is important, but there are dispensaries now that have been operating upwards of four years without any problems, and I want to know why you would waste the money to push them out and make them relocate to someplace else, when there's been no problems in the city. That's number one. Number two, if you think that under 400 dispensaries are going to serve 400,000 people in the city of Los Angeles without chaos, zoning problems, problems with graft and everything else, you're mistaken. Number three, to force a patient, a sick person, to have to worry, to be squirreled away into one dispensary is immoral and wrong.
Melody Carroll. There's a clock in front. When you see that come down to one, that's when you're done. So go ahead, ma'am. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for taking our statements. And I would like to direct this to everybody, and especially to Mr. Smith, who I don't say with pride that I'm in his district. I'd like to have you realize that there's disabled patients that have to take public transportation to these places. We have to be safe, we have to get there safe. One is not enough for us. There are many different dispensaries that carry different items, edibles, different forms of medicine that we need. Please think about that, that, don't restrict us to one, and how to get there safely. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Michael Hubman. Michael Hubman.
Good morning. My name is Michael Hubman. I'm a patient of a medical marijuana collective, specifically Arts District Healing Center. There are 134 remaining collectives who came forward, registered, and cooperated with the interim control ordinance. If you look at the proximity maps, every one of them would have to move because of the proximity to sensitive locations. These are the organizations that came forward in the spirit of cooperation. Where would you have them go? Another look at the map shows precious little places where they could go. Some districts have no place inside these proximity restrictions at all. I would like to suggest the ordinance that you are crafting include a citywide good neighbor variance provision. This does not mean a pass on proximity restrictions, but a process where good neighbor collectives could apply for a good neighbor variance remain in place. A community review process could be used to evaluate the suitability of each individual location and organization, so they might be considered for a good neighbor variance. Thank you.
Diane Hall.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Diane Hall, and I am a resident of Los Angeles County for medical marijuana. I have been coming here for quite a while now, listening to the people speak to you, and I honestly feel that you, many of you, not all of you, are seriously missing the point. The point here is that this is not about you. It's not about what you think about medical marijuana, and it's not about what you think should happen in your district. This is about the people, your servants, and you were elected by the people to do what they want you to do. They've asked you for years now, they've been telling you, "We want safe access." I just briefly, they don't want to be ashamed anymore to go to their collectives, they don't want to be afraid of the police to give their name that they may be harassed. They want dignity. They want dignity to get medicine that they need. So I am asking you to consider this small, brief scenario, that you have a mother, a son, or a daughter that is so sick they can't get out of bed to get their medicine. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our last morning speaker. We're now going into the afternoon session. Just so you there keeping time, it's now 12 o'clock. Elliot Katz. Elliot Katz. See, I thought we weren't going to take the rest of the cards. We're just informing you of the time. Mr. Katz.
Good morning. My name is Elliot Katz. I live downtown. First of all, I was sitting here, I have mixed feelings, listening to the discussion and seeing charts and graphs and maps. I have been waiting 36 years of my life for a body of government to address this issue at this, at this level, you know? And it's, it's a wonderful feeling. It really is. It really is. But the mixed feeling is, is I think that you're keeping one thing, that you need to keep one thing in mind, that you're not in touch with the foundation of, from which all this was built, is compassion, you know? And you guys are, you know, you talk compassion, but you're, you're looking at the problem when really what you think is a problem is the solution to the problem, you know? And the decisions you make affect the rest of the country. This is L.A.
Thank you, sir.
This is L.A.
Joe Green. Joe Green. Last call for Joe Green. Sarah Armstrong.
Good morning, everyone. Sarah Armstrong, founding member of the Working Group. You've heard many people here talk about the fact that patients need to go in and out of different dispensaries to find the strains that work for them. If you restrict this, you are in violation of the United States Constitution, the First Amendment. You are taking away patients' rights. Patients have the right to freely assemble for any legal purpose. If you are a medical marijuana patient with a letter, then you may absolutely belong to more than one dispensary. The overwhelming majority of medical marijuana patients are law-abiding. They do not divert their medicine, they are not interested in any legal activity. Please do not force these people to trade their constitutional rights for safe access. Thank you.
Maureen Corry.
Happy New Year, Council. Mr. Weston, it's a good thing to be part of your district, and I hope you help us do the right thing. I'm a medical marijuana patient. I have osteoporos, I mean, I have osteopenia, arthritis, and two herniated discs. If I didn't have this medical marijuana, I don't know where I'd be. My job entails me working in cold areas. It definitely helps me. I find it awfully incredible how you guys can restrict us, and at the end of the day, when all is said and done, if you have a pain in your body, you can walk right to that liquor store and get that bottle and go home, and it's all going to be okay. But if we go to the dispensary, it's not okay for us. And I beg you, please, don't take this away from us. I mean, we need it. There's people out there dying and that really need it to help them stay alive. Please do the right thing and let us have what we need.
I feel a little sick to my stomach. Can I smoke marijuana here? Why not? Ladies and gentlemen, there were two high school-aged kids in the back, and they were carrying skateboards. And they were wearing medical marijuana green t-shirts, and I took their pictures. So I want you to know what the future is. And then these people whisked them away. Junkie Nation. Junkie Nation. I voted for medical marijuana. I didn't vote for profiteers. I didn't vote for what they say here in their brochure. Once we put a stop to their ordinance, we can draft our own one that is for the industry, by the industry. Not for the patients, by the patients. Junkie Nations, profiteers. And I'm telling you right now, John Walsh's psychotic wavings always end up as conventional wisdom. I'm telling you right now.
Thank you, John. Don Duncan.
Save them from drugs.
Don Duncan. You're done, John.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Don Duncan, a resident of Los Angeles, and the California Director of Americans for Safe Access. I want to say, welcome to Mr. Kocorian, welcome to the Los Angeles City Council, and a thank you to the Planning Department. The report published was very helpful, very informative, and I know that was a lot of hard work. I want to remind the council members that, as I communicated to you yesterday in an email, that the vast majority of the medical marijuana collectives and cooperatives in Los Angeles are law-abiding, legally organized and operated facilities that are good neighbors, and you don't need owner's restrictions, buffer zones, and numeric caps to regulate good neighbors.
don't need owner's restrictions, buffer zones, and numeric caps to regulate good neighbors. There may be a handful of bad apples, and we have to deal with that, but we want to remember that we, we should not exclude the majority of the good operators just to deal with a handful of problems. There is no public safety crisis regarding medical cannabis in Los Angeles right now. And as Chief Beck has told us, medical cannabis collectives are not magnets for crime. So as you consider what to include when it comes to buffer zones and to numeric, to numeric caps and the other issues I raised, please consider the fact that these are good neighbors. Thank you.
James Cobb.
Good afternoon, City Council. It's my pleasure to be here today. I'm a currently homeless resident of the city of Los Angeles, and I spent the past three days in the custody of the Los Angeles Police Department and Los Angeles Sheriff's Department over my use of medical cannabis. I am a legal medical cannabis patient. At the time of my arrest, I had my doctor's note in my possession. Unfortunately, it didn't seem to mean much to Officers Corona and Pacheco of the Central Division of the LAPD. I'm currently being charged with felony possession of cannabis for sale. I only had less than three grams in my possession at the time. That's about all I have to say. I just really wish that we would stop prosecuting medical patients and really stop harassing the homeless population of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Larson, the Eagle Rock Neighborhood Council. We were really encouraged that we would have an ordinance today, but once again, Mr. Garcia said he were let down, we're disappointed by that. But we also want to thank, and publicly thank, Mr. Huizar for his leadership on this issue, and for his willingness to stand up for our neighborhoods in the face of a varied vocal and well-funded special interest group. He has shown the kind of political backbone that, which, which is rare in politics and almost nonexistent in this city. We support a 1,000-foot sensitive use buffer and the strictest possible buffer for residential. This is not about medicine, this is not about segregation, it's not about prohibition, it's about taking control of an out-of-control land use situation which has made LA the laughing stock of the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, folks, you got to show respect on both sides of the fence. Andrew Radel. Andrew Radel.
Good morning. You know, I'm going to thank Mr. Wozenthal, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Han, and Mr. Garcia. Now, Mr. Elecon, you know, I hear somebody call you sanitary boy, you know, you're not going to be consultant anymore. And I've heard you come up here and say, "I'm doing what I feel is right." You know, we voted you in to do what we feel is right.
Mr. President.
Because you live in my district, you know? You don't want to have us within your residence, you want to have guards, unarmed guards, patrolling two-block radiuses of collectives? Where does that fall in?
Mr. President, he needs to direct his comments to the council as a whole.
Well, wait a minute, he is my consultant. I did direct.
Sir, sir, that's the rule, please follow the rule, I won't be able to speak.
You start my time?
No, you're going, keep on ticking.
You know what, of all this you have here, there's one thing you've written right. Reyes, the Medical Marijuana Program Act of 2003 provides for the Association of Primary Caregivers and Qualified Patients to cultivate marijuana in specified medical courses, which is authorized as local government bodies to adopt and enforce consistent laws.
Thank you, sir.
You know what, you guys need to do this.
Barbara Burke. Barbara Burke. I'll emphasize one more time, folks, you have one minute, and that's all the time you have to speak on this matter. Trying to give everyone opportunity. Barbara Burke.
Good afternoon, Barbara Monahan Burke, representing the Studio City Neighborhood Council Board. Thank you, Councilman Huizar, for your leadership on this issue. We have 12 registered locations for medical marijuana dispensaries in Studio City, all within a one and a third by a three-mile area and within 500 to 1,000 feet of residences, churches, schools, other sensitive uses. All are in inappropriate locations, and there are too many for our small community. We ask you to support adoption of the 1,000-foot buffer, including for residences, the cap of 70 collectives to begin with, onsite cultivation only, and compliance with current California law to not have for-sale medical marijuana. I do want to say, we as a community do support the compassionate use of medical marijuana, but these regulations have to be consistent and constantly enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hernandez, please, David Hernandez.
David Hernandez, Valley Village. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Han, for calling for the public comment, that's a good sign for Lieutenant Governor. Let me say this, you know, some people would look at me as kind of like a, what part of the conservative right-wing conspiracy, you know, as a conservative Republican, I don't drink, I don't smoke, I don't do drugs, hell, I started a diet on January 1st. And so, the fact is that my only dog in this fight is that there's a fair and just treatment of people who have a medical condition that I am one biopsy away from having, just like everyone else in this room. And so, think about that as you move forward. And I have to say that the City Council has proved themselves, regardless of where they stand on the issue, to be concerned about this effort and have moved forward with this effort. And the stumbling block appears to be the City Attorney's Office, who each time we come to these meetings, hands you a brand-new edition of the bill.
Frank Scheftel. Frank Scheftel.
Thank you very much, appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you. Frank Scheftel from the Valley. Recently got off running for City Council, so had an opportunity to go out and talk with a lot of the community area, especially in CD2, and seeing what's happening out there. I applaud that you guys are working on this, and, but I have to say that there are a few of you that really aren't being part of this team. It's a team effort, and it's, you all need to join in and need to do this, and not stand back on your high horse and say, "I'm not going to do it." It's not you, it's your representation of your districts, and that's very important to remember, okay? You are representing people, all different walks of life of people, but we are all in the same situation. We are medical marijuana patients and we want safe access, okay? If you said like you had originally wanted it, why aren't they in pharmacies? Well, according to your restrictions, we wouldn't even be able to dispense them in pharmacies because they're located in these areas that you say they shouldn't be located in. This isn't an argument about whether it's legal or not, that's been done. Now it's where they're going to be allowed to have access, that's what we need, and we need to have safe access.
Michael Backus. Michael Backus. Mike, I've seen you run faster than that.
I'm moving quick, it's post-holodeck.
Thank you.
All agricultural products, including organics, contain traces of pesticides. Safe thresholds of pesticides are called tolerance limits. These limits are set by the federal EPA and enforced by the state through the California Department of Pesticide Regulation. Without these limits, the state cannot test for pesticides. Without these tolerance limits, our city cannot require testing of medical marijuana. What is the solution to ensure clean cannabis for patients? It's simple. Amend this draft to require collectives to cultivate using non-toxic methods, and you revoke the operating permit of any violators. It's simple, it's not science, and you should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve X.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name's Steve X. I'm a resident of Studio City and a volunteer at Care Collective in Van Nuys. I'd like to begin by welcoming my new Councilman for District 2, Mr. Paul Kocorian. Welcome, sir. And I'd also like to wish the very best to him, pledge my full support to the Janice Han for Lieutenant Governor campaign. I speak before you today with mixed emotions. On one hand, I'm thrilled that through the hard work of our City Council, patient advocacy groups, and yes, even our beloved City Attorney Office, we've finally arrived to a time where we're actually looking to pass something here. At the same time, however, I'm greatly disturbed by several items in this new draft, not the least of which is a proposed cap of as few as 70 collect, collectives operating in the city. You think neighborhood groups are unhappy with the situation now? Just wait until you have lines of patients stretching for blocks around the collectives every day.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Landa, and I feel frustrated, and I really don't even know what to say to you, because I think that as a patient, I would feel really frustrated not being able to join more than one collective, and I also feel that the City Attorney really shouldn't have anything to add or correct in what you have to say. You're our City Council, and you should be able to say what you want to say and pass what you want to say. I don't feel comfortable with the City Attorney just saying, "Okay, well, I'm going to rewrite this and rewrite your words and pass what I want to pass," because they have their own agenda, but you're supposed to have your own agenda. So that's what I don't feel comfortable with. Thank you.
When you cast your future vote to create a medical marijuana ordinance for the city, remember, it is not mandatory to create an, create an ordinance, you can simply allow state law to prevail. Please keep these things in mind. The current Compassionate Use Act law and its conditions, how you run a collective is what matters, that the agricultural properties not adversely affected by any city ordinance, since most if not all of the 34,000 agriculturally-zoned parcels in the city of LA can, despite what has been said today, actually do agricultural activities if they so choose, house or no house on the agricultural property. And those individuals, like my friend, Michael Oliveri, who have true ailments that need any ordinance that you craft to be truly compassionate, please follow the intent of the state law so that I will not have to hold up Mike's picture in the future and tell you about the guy who tried to raise your awareness about medical marijuana and who tried to make a difference is gone. He is dying. Do not make his efforts a lost cause. This issue is too important, it is a matter of Mike's survival as well as many, many others with medical ailments, as you have heard. I call out to the parent in each of you to do the right thing.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up. Patrick Wiseman. Patrick Wiseman.
Council, Patrick Wiseman, California on Development. You guys are going to consider about the cap. Now, if you guys do not understand the chaos that's going to happen, I'm going to give you an example. What happened if we capped supermarket by 80%? If we capped pharmacies by 80%? What you guys have to understand is that the demand for alternative medicine is a very, very big movement. People want, okay, the supply and demand is what you have to look at. If you cap it to 70 or 236, you're going to send 80% of the market back to the dark ages, then you'll have no transparency, you'll be blind, and the people who are going to get hurt are the people that need that medicine. Thank you.
Hello, Councilpeople. I've been sitting there, listening to everybody, but I'm really here to say something. I'm here to say I'm Native American, I'm very proud of it. I've welcomed, we've welcomed people from overseas, all you people probably came from overseas. We never said, "No trespassing, you can't do this, you can't do that," but it really pisses me off when I see people saying, you know, that it's all right to give people different kinds of drugs, but I tell you, I was, I was healed with my own herbs when I was a child. I was raised, and I was raised with natural remedies, and marijuana was one of them, but it's not like we abused it, and it's not a thing that's not unnatural, but I was healed, I was healed of blindness. I'm here to tell you, that was a miracle. We believe in prayer, but we also believe that, that everybody should be here to say how they feel, and that I believe in medical marijuana because it helped my brother, who was a quadriplegic. And I just want to tell you that...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Is that you running around the side? Broussard, not here? Okay, Audrey Broussard. Audrey.
What's your name, sir? Broussard, is it Sandy Broussard?
Anthony? It looks like, okay, Anthony?
What neighborhood?
Ventura Boulevard?
Ventura Boulevard, there you go, thanks.
Looks like Audrey, Anthony. Thank you, go ahead.
Sorry about my shaky handwriting.
Yeah, we're shaky.
I'm just wondering, are you guys actually listening to the planners that made the maps that said if you use a 500-foot buffer zone for residential, it'll eliminate almost every location? Are you listening to what he said? Look at the look on your face. Listen to what he's saying, he's the expert on it, not you. No, I don't, it's my turn to talk now. Also, why is, why is the City Attorney making changes? You guys are supposed to tell them what changes to make. Why are they making changes? Why are they doing your work? Control them, think about what you're doing. You say you want to have 70 to 140 places, why are you going to eliminate all the locations? We don't need a buffer zone between residential. Keep it away from the schools, do what you came here to do. You came here to make regulations and stop the proliferation. If you eliminate 86% of the stores, you've done that. Why are you doing all this other stuff? It's ridiculous.
Now Joshua Broussard. Joshua, you related to the former Speaker? Your penmanship is excellent, congratulations.
Other side of the family. My name's Joshua Broussard, patient, resident of Los Angeles and a medical marijuana patient. I just didn't think this meeting today was on the legality of marijuana, since the passing of Proposition 215 almost a decade and a half ago by the people of the state of California, and then the state legislature ratified that proposition with SB 420. So that's the people and the state saying that medical marijuana is not only legal, but medical. And I've been coming to these debates for, I don't know how long, and I've seen lawyers and police officers get up here and tell their opinion on medical marijuana, but I haven't seen you guys ask for one doctor, somebody from the medical facility to talk about the benefits of this drug. And like President Goretty said, I hope you guys get back to what the City Council does best, and that's regulating land use. And I'd just like to say, these facilities aren't cancers to the neighborhood, they're actually places where people within the neighborhoods who have cancer go to get their medicine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kevin Glenn. Looks like Glenn, G-E-L-Y. Is that you, Kevin?
Yes, good morning, Council. My name is Kevin Glenn, I'm a member of the Miracle Mile Residents Association, the Mid-City West Neighborhood Council, also I'm a teacher with LAUSD. On behalf of MMRA and MCW, we'd like to ask for a 1,000-foot buffer zone around our, our homes, our neighborhoods, our churches. We have had in, in Miracle Mile, we've had, since the...
No, these.
Since we've had some clinics coming in, we, we have, have seen an increase in crime, residential burglaries, break-ins on auto. On a different level also, just in terms of semantics, I think this is what we're sort of seeing here, is not so much a, despite my, my compassion towards those people who are sick, I, I do see that this is a beginning of an industry, because that's what I see in some of the literature. And I also see that basically a lot of people just try to take their right to get stowed.
Thank you, sir. Thomas, it's either Dustin or Dawson.
Good morning, Councilmen, Councilwomen. I'm a cancer patient, and I'm very happy to be alive today. I'm very grateful to be alive today. I've been... I've been through various treatments with all medical types of facilities and I found that medical marijuana is one of the things I need to use to get my pain and my cancer under control. I hope that each and every one of you understand that this is not something to be played with, with people's lives. It's a very important thing for all of us. I'd like to thank you in advance for taking a Solomon-type approach to dividing the baby in half. Thank you very much.
Nelson Brande the Second.
Just in response to the gentleman from the E Rock Neighborhood Council, I'm also resident of E Rock and I wholeheartedly but respectfully disagree with everything he said. Right now, I am looking at the fact that we have CVS, Rite Aid, Walgreens pretty much on every corner of our neighborhood. They're peddling drugs and those are drugs with harmful side effects, even death. You can get Tylenol. If you take too many Tylenol, you'll die. And that's being sold over the counter. Yet we want to get this, this natural remedy away from our, from our people, our sensitive areas, they call it. That's pure ideological statements. There's nothing, nothing factual to base that there's anything wrong with it. As far as crime is concerned, I mean, it's, again, it's completely ideological. Also, the, well, first, lastly, just the most importantly, the ideology that it's just a bunch of stoners that want to get this thing passed or push the, push the cross. This is a room full of stoners. I mean, a room full of stoners, you would think that, you know, can't do anything, but look at them.
Thank you, sir.
What's all up in?
Tarek Tabz. Tarek.
In December, Councilman Zine proposed a motion to recognize the stores that were forced to relocate that registered before the moratorium. I don't think it's fair to just disregard them because they were forced to move. Some of these guys are our best operators and have gone through the most problems to be where we are today. We've earned this right. We've seen the council propose motions and make changes and I think it's fair to ask them, ask you today to propose a motion to recognize this handful of stores, these handful of operators that have moved. We're good people. We're assets to our community. We try hard. We just want to be recognized. And I think it's very reasonable to make this concession. There's only a handful of us. We've dealt with proliferation and the people that joined the bandwagon after Obama was elected. So let's be fair here.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a clarity point. Mr. Garcetti and I are looking at it and that was put in and so he should be protected within that context. I want the City Attorney's Office to look specifically at it, but that was one of those that cease and desist letter, whereas move once due to cease and desist, that's on page four of the draft agreement. So if we're moving in this direction, this would protect his situation, which is on Lincoln Boulevard.
Thank you. Gordon McCullough. Gordon McCullough.
I want to thank everybody for doing a good job because it's hard to do what you do and it's not easy because they often say when two people talk, somebody's not listening. And first of all, I want you to know that I'm a layman. And anytime that you talk to a layman, he doesn't know what he's talking about. And the second thing I want you to know, that I'm working on my degree on stupidity and I haven't finished it yet. So those who have those degrees, that have finished their degrees, I appreciate you because you went to school to work on your degree. And anytime that a person will represent himself, has a fool for a client, and I'll apologize because I don't know what I'm talking about.
Thank you. Brent Saunders.
My name is Brent Saunders and I'm from Mar Vista, California, and I'm a medical marijuana patient. And I just want to point out that my use of medical marijuana allows me to get up and go to work in the morning and be a productive member of society. And having safe, affordable storefront access allows me and other people to be, you know, productive taxpayers to the city. And I'm not, you know, seeking other more costly treatments from the city itself. So we're here, we want to help the economy and, you know, be a more, a least restrictive ordinance would be more beneficial to the patients. Thank you very much.
Boris Sokol.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for letting me speak one minute. I just want to bring this matter, on February 2008, we received a scare letter from DUA and our collective natural remedies, we have to move for different location, not because we want to move, because we have to move. And on the period of the time when we operate, we serve so many sick people and we have so many letter from them, appreciate it. We move for better location. We have, we have a restroom for disabled people. We have two security guard. We support medical community. So please reconsider people who have to move by DUA letter, will be still operated and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Linda Marvopoulos. What's her last name, ma'am?
My name is Luisa Marvopoulos.
Luisa? Okay.
Luisa.
Looks like Linda. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Number one, neighborhood councils were asked to input on the medical marijuana issue. Greater Elysian Echo Park did not comply with this. They held no meetings on this issue. I ask that you disregard any recommendations this neighborhood council may have put out as they did not do the outreach to the community. Two, nowhere is education or re-education addressed in your ordinances. Parents, medication is a private issue. Please lock up your medications, whatever they may be. Did you know cigarettes and alcohol are more, are harder to buy because they're regulated? Also, we are not criminals, nor are we street drug users. We are patients with real medical issues. Give us our due respect with dignity. And just so you know, I signed up a few months ago to be an advocate for safe access ambassador. So I've been out there doing my field work.
Thank you, Desiree Hawkins. Ms. Hawkins.
Good afternoon, City Council. I am a medical marijuana patient and I see this as a very important issue. Los Angeles is here and sets an example for the entire world. And I see this also as a humanitarian issue. I believe I have a human right to safe access of what it is that is perfectly created for my body. I do not see that there's any reason to close a single dispensary. I see no reason why it shouldn't be right next to disabled places where people can be, have easy access. I have, I have no, I pray that this ordinance is compassionate in the highest degree, that there is no need for any kind of interference at all and that the compassion is placed first and foremost for every patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Ikley. Thank you for that sounds like. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It's really hard to address any of the issues in this new ordinance in less than one minute, but I'm going to try to address some of them. And I really have a question for anybody on this side of the ropes, including to the left of me, to most of you right, in regards to something that Barry Kramer brought up in regards to testing facilities. There's a part in this ordinance that requires testing of all medical cannabis from a licensed, certified laboratory. Can anybody at this horseshoe, since I can't name anybody by name, or anybody with the City Attorney's Office or Planning Office, name one certified, licensed laboratory that can test medical cannabis? I can tell you that the license and the, I'm not going to be able to say that word, but it is regulated by the DEA and the National Institute of Drug Abuse. And so there isn't a laboratory certified and licensed in the city of Los Angeles or most places to test medical cannabis because it's illegal under federal law due to scheduling. So please, I urge you, I just have one comment. I urge you to do what you can do within.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going to go to San Fernando Valley to City Hall. Bruce Darian in the San Fernando Valley at the Van Nuys City Hall. Bruce Darian.
Counsel President, if you would give us some advance notice, we'll have a better understanding when we're coming up. This is a, I just want to go on record here in the history of Los Angeles, this is a terrible ordinance that you're passing here. Marijuana has devastating effects on youth and ruining their initiative, their drive. The effects of marijuana are countless. People have, have perished as a result of drug use. It's documented, it's well-known. To the people that are truly sick, my compassion is for you. But if you pour a foundation and 1% of it is, has integrity and the rest of it is sham, that house is going to fall like a stack of cards. And I can tell you that by and large, this ordinance is a sham. Those doctors are prescribing these prescriptions are sham. They're sham doctors. We have a $5 million bill because Michael Jackson's perished because of anesthesia and all the drugs that he was on. $5 million have to be paid by somebody. And now all these people that are going to be on drugs are, we're going to have to.
Thank you, Bruce Darian. Are you the last speaker out there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that completes our public comment period on this matter. We now have Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Garcia. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I have staff back up again?
I was still reading cards. I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti.
Did you want to go first?
No, it's Mr. Garcetti, not Mr. Garcia.
Oh, okay. Just put it on hold until I get the staff back up there. I got to ask the planning people something.
My apologies. Mr. Garcetti.
That great guy from the planning department. You're a great guy, by the way. Just hold my time while I just ask him this quick question. When Mr. Alikon said what he said, what does that do to your maps and to the thing? I just want to know what that motion is that he put out.
Well, my understanding is that the motion would be 1,000 feet around sensitive uses and 500 feet around residential uses. What our analysis showed is that that is the most restrictive scenario of the six scenarios that we analyzed. And what it would mean in terms of the existing 137 registered collectives, four only could stay in their current location and 133 would have to move.
I see, okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to know what it is. I'm not going to talk much today. Today's a bad day for me. 15 years ago today, my partner died of AIDS and I know what he went through for eight years before he died. And if it wasn't for marijuana, he wouldn't have lived those eight years. It's a shame he didn't make it long enough for the drugs that came along that kept people alive. But he died and this is his tie and I worry in remembrance of him. I think our nation's discussion on this issue has probably run the clock and I'm looking forward to leadership out of Washington to change the federal law, first of all, which is a draconian law. I think our city is trying to be as compassionate as it can under, under Ed Reyes's leadership. He's put a lot of time and energy into this. And frankly, I've toured some of our clinics. I've gone in with my staff. I've looked at situations there. And I hope the day comes when enlightenment happens so we don't throw the kids away in jail like we have. When Schwarzenegger gets up and talks about, we have to spend more on education than jails. Well, we have to change those dumb laws that have put these people in prison to begin My last point is I hope my colleagues and I can come to some kind of a compromise so we can deal with the big issues of the city, which is the budget and our future as a great city. And I hope to God we can regulate and tax so we can get a revenue stream and get beyond where we are today. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I think there was a gentleman whose card was here from the previous meeting when we weren't able to hold a public hearing. So, Mr. Rubison, would you like to come forward and I'll, I'll speak right after him.
All right.
Thank you. I'm William Lus-Bosson and I was here last time and I thought I was going to be called either. Anyway, it's enormous, enormous, this issue and to me, it's very important and to those that aren't here, I'm sure it is more important. Mike, man, I wish, I wish Mike can say his, his opinion, you know? It's important, the compassionate act, I voted on that. And, you know, my friends that couldn't be here today that I told you about earlier, you know, none of them have rap sheets. They were voters. They voted responsibly. I did jury duty. I did the stuff that I was supposed to do. What about those people, you know, like me, who did things that they're supposed to do and then they don't exist? They don't, they don't have opportunity to participate and to be compassionate to me? You know, what happens to them? You know, what do I do next? So just think about that next time when you make the vote. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you again, everybody who, for their comments and everybody here in council who's worked really hard on this. I think we, we have taken about nine of the 10 steps to finally have an ordinance in place. I wanted to say a couple of things on some of the comments that were made as well as then some of the substantive changes that I think are in the blue because I spent some time reading and, and I know I've talked to the City Attorney about some of these and Mr. Rosendahl talked about one of them, just so folks know what, what is before us. First, for folks who are disappointed that we don't have a, a full ordinance here today, I think we have to iron out each detail and one bad detail can be a bad ordinance. So we will get that done. We've had, I think collectively between us, probably 50 meetings this week on budget as individuals and, and this is probably our one or two on this. So there's a lot of activity happening on budget and on pensions, on putting people back to work. And we need to get back to work on other things besides this too. And I know that's the feeling around this entire horseshoe. Trust me, in private conversations, there's not a single person who doesn't want to move this, but move it right, of course. Secondly, I wanted to say that, you know, one of the reasons why balance is so important and it doesn't mean that it gets it exactly right, we have constraints of federal law the way they are, whether we like it or not. We have constraints of a pretty badly drafted original California initiative. I think we can all, no matter where you are on this, say that this wasn't ideally written. It didn't actually think through a lot of details if you wanted something that was about wider access. And for those who wanted something more restrictive, there's a lot of loopholes in it. I really personally, as a Californian and Angelino, look forward to that clarity from the federal government to some progress at the state level. I think that's really where we're going to be less constrained by this as well. One of the reasons why balance is important is, you know, while there was this supposed reef of madness happening out there, we had the safest crime year that Los Angeles has experienced in 50 years last year, that's an important point to make. But similarly, but similarly, we need to have tools how we regulate land use. It's not just about whether pot is or isn't a bad thing. You know, a, a medical marijuana clinic does something to the streetscape, for instance. So if it's on a main, a place where we're used to having people who feel safe because they window shop and things like that, anything, forget that it's a marijuana dispensary that doesn't have, you know, windows and you can see people and they're shopping. If there's too many of those, it begins to take down an entire residential, I mean, sorry, commercial shopping district. So we have legitimate things that have nothing to do with whether pot is good or bad, just about making sure that these are put in the right places. So for those who say, don't restrict these at all, I hope you understand this isn't about pot also. This is about good planning and I appreciate the work the planning department and others have put into this. The, the things that are before us here today, the four main ones that were pulled out and I just was handed some of the details. One, which was on page three and four, is a technical fix to confirm the cap of 70 and distribution within community plan areas. I spoke with Mr. Weezer about this. It wouldn't have allowed some plan areas to have them at all. And the way it was written before, each one had to have a set number instead of some sort of flexibility on that depending on whether the regulations allowed them to be there. So this just allows that number to be better hit. The second one is on page four, rules for who gets to register from those that were previously registered under the ICO, the gentleman that Mr. Rosendahl addressed and a couple of council members came to us about this, saying there were some folks who did register before the ICO, but then they got letters for their landlords did that made them get kicked out, that those ones were still playing under the rules. Before we had that only people who were still at the same address could, could be quote-unquote grandfathered in. These ones might have had to move, but had originally been there before the ICO and only had to move because of DEA letters to their landlords. The third thing that was there is a priority order for picking locations because this will require some moving. And I totally get the point that that is a hardship and that's a difficult thing. We're trying to, to do as well as we can and recognize that a door opens up for folks who played under the rules. played under the rules. But a priority order for picking locations that previously registered are ordered as per the date and time of their earlier registration. And new collectives are ordered by clerk drawing that only occurs if we get under the 70. That was, I think, everybody agreed, those that are there should have some sort of priority. But if we don't reach the number and there's still the cap, that then we would have a random draw as to be the fairest of new businesses, or new collectives, excuse me. And then fourth, page eight and nine, was the distance from residential lots and residential uses. We went through that before in terms of defining that more clearly. I know that there's some council members who disagree. There should be, for instance, no alleyway distinction. I think that would create votes, one person would go one way if we took it out and the other. I'm happy to let that play out just by people's conscience and their vote on that. But those are the four main changes. Otherwise, we have the two motions before us. Mr. Alacon's, which is the 500 feet for sensitive, sorry, for residential and 1,000 for sensitive uses, which we'd vote on first, and then Mr. Reyes's motion that he made earlier, which would take residential out as a sensitive use, but still keep the language on adjacency, as well as any residential areas that are zoned industrial and commercial per Ms. Perry's concern, and then make it a 500-foot buffer for sensitive uses. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr., excuse me, Mr. Carricks. Hold on, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Carricks came up the first time. Here the second time. Mr. Carricks, then Mr. Weezer, then Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, I'm still trying to read through some of the changes, but I just wanted to flag one by the city attorney that we need to clarify. At the top of page four, it states that among the 35 community plan areas, there needs to be one for every 57,000 residents, and no collective shall be located in any community plan area that contains fewer than 50,000, 57,000 residents. I think that wipes out a few community plan areas. Doesn't impact my district directly, but I don't think this was the council's intent.
Mr. Carricks, we'll hear from the city attorney and planning on that. Respond to that, please. City attorney and planning.
Yes.
Please hold my time.
Jane Usher and Sharon Siedor of Cargis. This is an area, Councilman, where you're going to need to give us precise direction. There are a handful of community plan areas that don't rise to a 57,000 population, and planning has looked at it, and they've done an allocation to those, one, one collective to some of them, and zero collectives to others. And perhaps Alan Bell, Alan could describe for you how that was arrived at. You could ask that each community plan area have a minimum of one. You could set a population threshold. If it meets that, it gets a minimum of one. The effort is here to balance them by 57,000 people.
And I'm not sure exactly how we do that. I know I happen to have a community plan area where it probably doesn't make sense to have any because there's nothing appropriate. But the other three, it seems like there probably should be a minimum of one logically.
One way you could achieve what you were saying is everyone would have a minimum of one if the distance and sensitive use requirements could be met.
Seems like that would make a little more sense. I mean, as I say, it doesn't impact my district one way or the other, but it's just something I think nobody really intended and wound up in that.
Thank you, Mr. Carricks. Now, Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Labonge. Mr. Bill, did you have a comment on that from planning?
Just some observation. We didn't start with the 57,000 as a way of allocating them. We based upon each plan area's percentage of the citywide total. And so in the charts that we distributed last week, those numbers by plan area, that's how the numbers came out. It just turned out that on a citywide basis, it is one for every 57,000 persons, but that's not how it works out for each plan area.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. I have some, are we going to vote first on the distance requirements and have that discussion, or discuss other items in the ordinance? Or are we just leaving it open right now? I just want to kind of get--
The council rules and Robert's rules, it's, any new motions that are made are voted on first, so you can make any other ones. I think Mr. Carricks did that. If there was no opposition, that's a friendly amendment. But any contested ones, the last ones go first. So I just laid out what was already on the table.
Okay. Well, I'd like to listen to the makers of the motion on the 500 versus 1,000. I have my own opinions on that. But on the items that we just presented today, I do have issue with this new language that we saw today for the first time. That wasn't vetted at any previous discussion, which says, or has moved once due to a cease and desist letter from a federal governmental entity. What we discussed and voted upon last time was that we were going to have a 70 cap, but we recognized that there were about 137, that were in operation today, that we will allow and grandfather in to continue operating so long as they comply with all the other guidelines in the ordinance. But I'm looking at this, and it doesn't give us some clear direction as to what this means. Because as I sat through Plumb, most of the people who came up and we were discussing the hardship exemption, all of them, everyone received a letter to cease and desist from the federal government. So what does this mean? Is this going to bring us back up to 186? I think that's what this will do, and that's not what we voted on last time.
Councilman Jane Usher, you're absolutely right. This cease and desist letter exception was not in what you previously voted on. If you take a look at two, a collective would have to meet five tests, including having been registered timely under the, prior to the interim, under the interim control ordinance. But let me just tick through the five tests, and it's a policy to make a decision as to whether a cease and desist letter can be an exception. So first, you have to have continuously operated at your registered location. Again, a policymaker can decide to add the exception for an operation that's moved once. Secondly, you must have registered under the ICO before November 12, 2007. Three, you must have the same ownership and management as in your initial registration. Four, you cannot have been subject to a nuisance or public safety violation of state or local law. And five, you will need to comply with all of the location and distance requirements set forth in this ordinance. You'll have to meet all five tests.
So as someone here who could answer the question as to how many more would now be able to continue to operate if we include the language "has moved once" due to a cease and desist letter? Because if you ask me, I'll say all 186 would. I mean, every time I heard from a dispensary that was fighting the hardship exemption enforcement, all of them had received a letter. So we don't know what the effect of that would be, and pretty much make awash the decision we made before. Unless we have some good data to show otherwise. But just based upon anecdotal evidence that I have listening, it's going to bring us back up to 186.
Councilman, we don't have that data today. It's possible that we could research and obtain it. Of course, a location could have moved only once due to a cease and desist letter. But the ceiling, you're absolutely right. The ceiling could then be 186. I do not know how many letters. Perhaps someone within the council or another operating unit, the city clerk's office has that data.
Okay. Well, at this point, I'd ask that we remove that unless, I mean, I'll wait for some data before this is over, but unless we clarify--
Mr. Garcetti?
It's not what we intended.
Mr. Weezer, can I clarify, I think, what Mr. Rosendahl's intention, and there's, I think there are four or five this only applied to. You can't confuse the two. None of the folks who came before you as a hardship exemption are these. Those are all post-Ico ones. This only applies, and maybe it can be better specified, to pre-Icos and their landlords received a cease and desist letter. And if, for any reason, they can't have been cited, too, that disqualifies them. So it's actually part of that 180-whatever number, not the additional 800 that came before--
But that's what you're saying, but that's not what this says.
No, no, I agree. That's why I'm saying you're right. I'm just clarifying. I didn't write this language. I'm just trying to help here.
So we need to change the language.
So what I would propose, and maybe Mr. Rosendahl can make that motion, is we can have that more explicitly stated, that it's the pre-Ico ones, the landlords received a cease and desist.
Two points. Thank you for that clarification. It only meant to be pre-Ico. That's not what this says, so we need to clarify. Even after we, even after we do that and we clarify pre or post-Ico, we still don't know what that number is. What is that number? Is it 10? Is it 100? What is that number?
That have come to our attention, period.
Is there someone here from the clerk's office or building and safety that could verify that? Who did these, who did they register with? We should know. Somebody should know that. How do we know it's four or five?
No, did--
In other words, I would be happy to take your word for it, Mr. Garcetti or Mr. Rosendahl, but we need to see that. We don't know, what if we adopt this and there's 50 of them? I don't know.
Mr. Miller, are you aware of that? Jerry Miller?
No, I don't know the specific number. I'm told that it is a handful. I don't know that the clerk would know either. They wouldn't necessarily know who, when somebody has registered, when they've stopped operating, the clerk doesn't necessarily know that. That's why manually, the city attorney had to call and find out who was still operating. So I don't believe that anybody could give you a hard and fast number of how many of the original 186s.
We wouldn't know. Somebody could say and say, "I got the cease and desist letter before the ICO." We're not sure they even operated. It has come to our attention that there may be four or five, but there could be somebody out of the woodwork, and that's the law, that's the ordinance. It's pretty vague if we follow this and not know what that means. And I'm not sure where we're trying to get at. Why would we allow this exception as well? Why would we allow these four or five to continue even if they got the cease and desist letter? The rationale is not there either.
If I could, can I comment on that?
Well, Mr. Labonge is next, and then, pressure button, Mr. Rosendahl.
I just wanted to respond.
You want to respond to that? Mr. Labonge?
Please.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl, please.
Thank you so much, colleague. No, the point is, this particular clinic moved from their existing location to another one within keeping with the law, but they moved after they were told to leave. And they did it intentionally. They went to Lincoln Boulevard. I toured the facility with my staff. I looked in the neighborhood. They picked a better location, not only because they were following the law that they were part of, but they picked a location that was less offensive to anybody. In fact, I talked to the whole neighborhood. So they, in good faith, moved. And so that's why they should be grandfathered, four or five of them. All I know is of one in my district that has come to me over the time, and I actually toured it last week just to make sure about it. And frankly, they should be grandfathered in. I thought that was the whole process of what we were doing, city attorney, right?
Councilman Jane Usher, the number that we're talking about, the ceiling is 186. Because 186 registered, and this clause taken collectively--
Right, which is what they did.
It requires them to have timely registered.
Right.
We could put that as number one so that everybody knows that's the first test.
Right.
The second test is continuously operated at their current location, and here's the, and we believe that's 137. But if you wanted to add, Councilman Weezer, or moved once on receipt of a cease and desist letter, you could do that, and that's the number I can't tell you. That number, it will be somewhere between 137 and 186.
Right. Now, I don't want to waste anybody's time here. I just like the technicality of this one resolved with the city attorney's office. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
I'll say, we, actually, Mr. Labonge is next, and then--
Yeah.
Then I'm next, so I'm now.
Go ahead.
One minute. I rise, okay, in the discussion. I support Mr. Reyes's proposal. I think that works with the city of Los Angeles. I also ask that we have, and I need a second on this, that instead of a three-year review as recommended by the city attorney, that it be a two-year review. We have to look at it. And also, the other question I ask, and I look at Ms. Han for so many things, but in your district, there's many interesting uses that have special inspection permits. How are we going to make sure the building and safety is going to get out to inspect these? Do we need to come back later with a special use ordinance that gets revenue to the city, as you're always concerned with, Mr. Rosendahl, so that someone comes out and inspects to make sure it's safe, clean, and operable? So I think we'll do that in the future, so we could move ahead. But at the same time, we need to look for ways to come out to make sure it's proper in whatever the ordinance is to follow. So I thank you, and seven seconds. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Was that a motion, Mr. Labonge?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Reyes? Very well. Mr. Carricks?
Just an additional clarification on this. The people that received these letters, these were landlords. A lot of landlords received threatening letters. "We're going to jail you if you keep these medical marijuana collectives open." So a handful of them kicked out their collectives even if they were perfectly fine operators. So the fact that some folks were in that category, and anecdotally, some of the better operators in the city, that handful shouldn't be penalized because of how the federal government operated. They're really no different than any of the others, except on the roulette wheel, their number happened to come up, and their landlord happened to kick them out, but through no fault of their own. So they really shouldn't be handled any differently. It would be nice to know whether it's 40 or 5. Again, anecdotally, we've heard that it's probably around four or five, and I'd be surprised if it were more than 10, but we don't really have a solid handle on that.
Thank you. There's no one else on the queue. Mr. Garcetti, your pleasure on this. Take the votes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Alacon?
Can we bifurcate the question on my motion?
Between the residential part and the sensitive uses? Sure. Okay.
So, point of order, Mr. Reyes's motion is only speaks to sensitive uses. There's no mention of residential distance, is that correct?
He said, no. There's residential, Mr. Reyes can clarify, but it was residential would not be a sensitive use, but we'd have the adjacency language stay in.
So that is your motion. It's not only on the sensitive uses 500 foot. So your language is 500-foot sensitive uses and residential via but language that's written right now in our ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, and we're going to vote first and then Alacon's? And you bifurcated that?
And the other ones, the other motions that were made, was there any objection to? If not, those will be accepted as friendly. Mr. Labonge, on two years, the other things that were made? Okay? Okay. So those will be accepted as friendly amendments. Again, this is then to provide direction to the city attorney to put together a draft ordinance based on the amendments that are before us. So the first amendment, which is asked to be bifurcated, do you have any preference which order? Mr., okay, Alacon? Okay, first on the, let's do the residential, whether or not to have a 500-foot residential buffer? Okay?
Yes or no?
That's a yes or no. I don't have any other buttons on my machine, maybe you do.
Alacon motion, right?
Yeah, he asked for the two elements of it to be bifurcated, so we'll do both the 1,000 feet from and the 500 feet residential. So first, the residential. Mr. Weezer, did you have a question on that before we voted? I'm sorry, on the queue, without your previous?
You're taking up first the residential 500 foot, not the 1,000 sensitive uses for Mr. Labonge? Because we're on the Alacon's motion, you're not--
Correct. Correct. Keep residential... Sorry, Mr. Alacon, you might actually have three elements, because you do take residential out as a sensitive use, but then you add 500 for residential as a separate category. Is that correct?
No, no, no. That's right.
Well, why don't we take that vote first, then, on residential use? Because yours isn't relevant if it's not taken out yet. Does that make sense? It hasn't been taken out. Okay. So the first vote, colleagues, is whether or not residential is a sensitive use. Okay? Everybody clear on that? We're trifercating.
The vote would be to change residential from a sensitive use to a 500...
Okay, so it was that. Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification. It's to change from a sensitive use to instead of 500-foot buffer, okay? Please open... Are we clear? Are people clear? Okay. It's, we're bifurcating both elements of Mr. Alacon's. His first element, he is saying, is to take out the definition that residential is a sensitive use, but nevertheless, to have a 500-foot buffer from residential uses. Okay? Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, eight noes.
Okay, that does not pass. The second piece... Excuse me. We've got a number of votes to get through. If I can ask your indulgence, please. Our second one is on a 1,000-foot buffer for sensitive use. Please open the roll. This is 1,000 feet from sensitive uses, so which is...
Yes.
Correct. Which right now still includes residential, because that was the last motion that we took. I understand that. I'm just, where we left business off, we had defined residential as a sensitive use. So Mr. Alacon's first piece, which was to take that away and to make a 500-foot buffer, failed. So we're still at the same place. So, Mr. Alacon, did you want to... Did you want to say no longer a...
It wasn't my intent to include residential in a 1,000-foot.
Okay.
I just wanted to...
So then this is to take out residential...
Per the standard...
And to have 1,000...
For the standard definition of planning, which does not include residential.
Not to include residential in a 1,000-foot...
But you're taking out residential, right?
I'm taking out residential on the...
A 1,000-foot buffer from sensitive uses, which is no longer includes...
But I want sensitive uses to be 1,000 feet.
Yeah, and take out residential.
Okay. We'll make that as part of the bifurcation. Yes, it's that to take residential out as a definition of sensitive use and to create a 1,000-foot buffer for sensitive use. Mr. Zine?
And just one more time, can we get the definition of sensitive use for everyone's clarification?
Councilman, I'm on page eight at the bottom. Here are the defined sensitive uses. I'll read them. School, public park, public library, religious institution, licensed childcare facility, youth center, substance abuse rehabilitation center, or any other medical marijuana collective.
Thank you. Okay. Folks clear? Ms. Han, did you have something on this? Ms. Han, did you have a point of clarification? I saw you on the queue. Okay. All right. Please open the roll. Sorry. Please open the roll, ma'am clerk. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, six noes.
Okay, that passes. So I think Mr. Reyes's motion, which was the same thing, but with 500 instead of 1,000, is not necessary, or do you want to vote... I mean, if we vote on that, it would contradict passing that previous one, so now that that's been bifurcated, it's 1,000 with not residential. Okay? So we, it would be, I think, out of order to vote on the second one. Okay? So that will be the instruction moving forward to the city... Yes, what we round up doing is the residential use does not count as a sensitive use anymore, and there's a 1,000-foot buffer around sensitive use. Okay? What about the adjacent language was put in there? There's no objection earlier? Sorry. Oh, yeah. So actually, we should probably take that out and bifurcate it. Okay, you're right. Let's take that piece on the adjacent language as the... We have now, the new language was actually moved, the draft, if you remind us the page number, Ms. Usher. Hold on one second.
Council President, it's on page nine.
So page...
Near the top, and it's small letter B as in boy. The language, abut, across the street or alley, common corner, and it's both for a lot that's residentially zoned, or a lot improved with a residential use, which would capture mixed use building with residential.
Okay. Mr. Corretts?
My understanding was that the 1,000 feet of sensitive uses was with an elimination of the abutting language and any other language with residential.
Mr. Alacon did not make that motion. So we can vote on it. Mr. Roosevelt?
Point of clarification. City attorney, if this, in fact, was eight or nine or whatever it was, what does that mean in terms of the real numbers? Does that cut them all out? I mean, 1,000 feet is... He said 500.
I understand your question. I need Alan Bell of Planning to answer it.
Yeah, Alan, 1,000 feet, what will that do? Of course, I wouldn't care about my district too, but everybody's district.
So councilman, if I could ask, 1,000 feet from sensitive uses excluding residential?
Yeah, that's what we just approved. I mean, not all of us voted that way, but that's what the council approved.
The statistic is, 1,000 feet sensitive uses, no buffer around residential, 39 citywide could stay in their current location, and 98 would have to move.
Yeah, and that would totally wipe out most of what we have in my district. Is that right?
I'd have to take a look at that in more detail. I have the information on a citywide basis.
But already voted, so...
Well, we're trying to clarify right now, as Mr. Reyes's motion said 500 feet...
That's right.
As well as other things. If we took a vote on that and that also passed, we'd be in a legal predicament of having passed 1,000 and 500. So I'm trying to get some clarification from our city attorney, whether or not... Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. I'm trying to get some clarification whether we can even, under our rules, take up that 500 piece, or whether we need Mr. Reyes to remake the motion with that element withdrawn. So hold on a second, and we'll get some clarification. We could. But if you bifurcate, you still have to vote on the 500 feet, and that could pass again still. Same problem. Hold on one second. Okay, all right. So there's two options here, folks. We can either take Mr. Reyes's motion with the 500 feet and both. This is just an instruction to draft, so it's not a final vote. And the city attorney would bring one that says 500 and one that says 1,000 to us on Tuesday. Hold on. Or Mr. Reyes can take that piece out, and we can just be voting on the other element of it. But that's his prerogative, and both can procedurally fall under the council rules and Roberts rules. Mr. Reyes, as a maker of motion?
I would rather be consistent, stick with the 500 with the adjacent language. The worst thing that can happen is we get more information as to what that means and how it looks in our ordinance.
It would be my suggestion, then, if folks want to make sure, if Mr. Alacon's ultimately prevails at 1,000 feet, that somebody should make a motion to ensure that language separate from Mr. Reyes's on the adjacency also carries today.
Motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we do 1,000 feet from sensitive uses and 500... I'm sorry, and adopt the language on abutting for residential.
You can't, because we already did the first part. You can't remake that motion.
Well, you just said Mr. Reyes could do the first part.
Well, he has his before, predated that.
It's exactly the same.
Yes, his predated. Under the, under Roberts rules, you can't...
No, it's the same issue.
Unless Mr. Alacon were to reconsider.
My motion is different in that I'm adding the abutting language, so it's a different motion.
My suggestion would be, and you get the same effect, is just to add the abutting language separately, because that's passed.
No, that hasn't passed.
No, his 1,000-foot did pass. Got eight votes. So you'd get the same outcome, you just need to say, "I want the abutting language." So just move the abutting language, and you'll get that.
I move the abutting language.
All right. So we'll take that up, and then Mr. Reyes's full motion at 500 plus abutting motion. Yes, Mr. Zine?
Point of clarification on the abutting language. Is the abutting language from property line to property line? Or how do you determine the abutting aspect of this, so it's clear for everyone, including the enforcement, folks?
Yes, it is.
So it's property line to property line? So that where that property line begins, where that property, it can't be...
Correct, and all the maps and tables were based upon that assumption that it was the property line.
Okay, so what, we're talking about the abutting portion. We're not talking about a distance. It could be two feet, it could be 200 feet. There's no distinction other than abutting.
It's not a radius. It's adjacency language that, I believe, the city attorney had read.
I'm just trying to get clarification for the folks that want to establish, and the folks that are going to be enforcement, because when you say abutting, it can be interpreted in different ways. I'm trying to get a clear definition.
We went through that a little earlier to clarify, to make sure that it did hit that legal and clear definition for...
I didn't hear that.
It was, it's in there, and Ms. Usher mentioned it was touching the corner of, so that included catty corner. It was, we went through that.
So it...
Yes.
It's fixed.
It's fixed.
Is it okay?
All right. Okay. So let's first take up Mr. Weezer's motion. Yes, Mr. Corretts?
Well, I still have a question.
Okay.
First of all, I want to clarify the 1,000-foot, because I looked through all the maps and looked at the various planning areas, and it looked like you could come pretty close to shoehorning the number that you needed with the 1,000-foot requirement. But I want to know if page nine, section B, if that entire definition was included with those maps, because it wouldn't appear to me to be the case. When I look at areas in my own district, almost every commercial street has residential across the alley. So, for instance, on Melrose, where you have 14, and it's a disaster, with 1,000-foot sensitive use requirement, you might get one. If you had the across-the-alley requirement, you would have zero. And I think the ideal in this is to get rid of the 14 and the proliferation, but to have some access and have the ability to have one there. At least in the 5th council district, there's an alley across from virtually every commercial street and every retail establishment, and it would take it down to zero and not make it very practical.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
I'm sensitive to everybody's concern, but there's a certain protocol that I believe is how we're supposed to conduct the meetings. And I just don't think this is it. I mean, we're down to the voting stage.
Well, nobody has called the question, so there is, new motions are allowed and debate can be allowed.
It's time for us to move, I believe, Mr. President. And the language that Mr. Weezer is recommending is language that I recommended when we first had the discussion on it. So if there's going to be a motion on that, then the motion should be mine, and Mr. Weezer could second it with me. But it is time for us to vote, to begin the process, and it's time today. I mean, let's get it, let's start, let's get it done. Let's vote.
Ms. Perry is next on the queue, and Mr. Alacon, I'll call you right after Ms. Perry.
I'm ready to vote.
Hold on. We're still on your time, Mr. Corretts?
Yes, I have my time. Please hold my time. I never...
We don't hold time, but we'll run it out. You have 44 more seconds. Yes, point of order takes precedence. Mr. Smith, yes.
Point of order takes precedence.
Point of orders takes precedence, even over point of information. Point of order...
Point of order is, you announced we were going to begin voting, therefore, the debate is closed. We started voting already.
Technically...
It does not need a motion now to continue vote. We've already started voting, so...
On the existing ones that are before us, that is correct. But that was because the queue had run out. Technically, as much as I'd like to agree with you, if folks press the button and want to be heard and make new motions, we do them in reverse order. Nobody has called the question, so we have that before us.
I'd like to challenge the decision of the chair and ask for a vote.
So if you... Mr. Alacon?
I called the question.
Okay. And then finish. The last speaker who is midway in the queue is Mr. Corretts, and then the question has been called. If anybody objects, they can do it in a second. Mr. Corretts?
Just a point of order. I asked a question to staff, and somehow it never got answered, and somebody else...
We'll let them answer it right now?
I'm going to put the pie chart graphic on the table, on the screen. We can have that. To answer your question, Councilmember Corretts, there are pie charts that show no residential buffer and a 200-foot residential buffer. The language on adjacency would fall somewhere in between those two. So it's more restrictive than a no residential buffer, but less restrictive than a 200-foot residential buffer.
I actually didn't answer my question. The question was the maps that we saw that reflected how many locations there were within community plan areas. Did that include this level of restrictive language, or was that...
It did not.
It did not. So we actually haven't seen what the impact would be of adding this into the 1,000-foot sensitive use.
That is correct.
And we actually, once again, don't know how many we would be reduced to. We know that it looked practical based on the mapping and the numbers, but again, we could be down to 60. That could be viable. I know in my district, this wipes out most of them.
We have orders of magnitude. We have analyses that bracket all the different choices. So again, the scenario that looks at a 200-foot buffer around residential uses, that is more restrictive than the adjacent standards. So adopting the adjacent language, it falls somewhere between no buffer around residential uses and up to, but not including, a 200-foot buffer around residential uses. So it would fall in between of the two pie charts that are on the far left and then in the middle.
We have Mr. Alacon, who has called the question. You can't do that while somebody else is speaking, so Mr. Corretts got to finish. He has called the question with Mr. Weezer's consent, and of course, Mr. Weston, you are right that you did make that before, so we'll take it up as Mr. Weston's motion on the adjacency, an independent vote on the adjacency. And for any folks that are confused about this, and Mr. Smith, I'm happy to take a vote on the decision, the chair too, if you'd like to do that right now, because you're right, that needs to be taken. We have been considering this with many amendments for many days of debate. When we've done that, we voted on one, and debate and discussion continues. It's not that it's ever the end of it unless somebody calls the question on the entire thing. So, Mr. Alacon, would you like to do that?
Very good.
All right. Is there any objection to calling the question?
No objection.
Seeing none? We have speakers on the queue. The question meaning ending debate, calling the question is just to end debate. So if nobody has an objection, the debate is now ended. There are no other motions that can be made or arguments that can be made. We have before us Mr. Weston's motion on the adjacency language. If we can please open the roll on that. That's what the city attorney just detailed and pointed to. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. The adjacency language. Please keep it open. Yes, the adjacency language on abutting, touching, across the, cross room, et cetera. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, four noes.
That passes. Now, we have last before us, Mr. Reyes's motion, which is 500 feet and the adjacency motion. We know that these are, to some degree, a repetition on the adjacency and would potentially conflict with the 500 and 1,000, but procedurally, what the city attorney will do is bring us both versions. Yes, Mr. Alacon?
To clarify for everybody, the city attorney has told me that that would mean they would come back with two draft ordinances...
Correct.
With regard to this section.
As I just mentioned, yes. Okay. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, six noes.
Okay. Like the earlier one, those two versions will both be coming back to us on Tuesday. We thank the city attorney. We look forward to seeing the language on that, and we will, of course, be able to hear from the public again on that, on Tuesday. We will be moving to agendize that. Thank you again, everybody, for your patience and a very extensive process, and we will see everyone then. Thank you. Yes, clarification from the city attorney?
Jane Usher, city attorney's office, the only clarification was whether we should leave in the cease and desist letter language.
That was accepted, I believe, as friendly with the changes made.
I think so, too.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Labange?
Two-year review.
That was accepted as friendly as well, absolutely. Any other clarifications while we're on the record?
Yes, please.
Hold on one second, they just need to clarify one thing.
Can we get some information, whatever information is available to us, that would clarify that language on whoever received a cease and desist letter? I understand that's within 137 and 186, but it'd be helpful to us to understand whether that means, you know, 40 or four, because if it's 40, that certainly isn't the intent. If it's four, you know, that's, you know, that's negligible, so we need that information, if we can.
Councilman Jane Usher, where we'll look is if there were hardship exemptions filed by the registered under the ICO collectives, we'll look in those files.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, any other clarification?
Yes, I think we have one other item, and this was on the distribution within the community plan areas, whether there was an intention of the council to have every community plan area have a minimum of one collective, or whether you had to meet, yes, thank you, Sharon, if you could meet the spacing requirements, or whether there was some minimum population threshold that a community plan area would need to meet in order to be able to have that one. The overall distribution is one collective for every 57,000 residents, but there are community plan areas that fall underneath that threshold.
Mr. Weezer, did you want to clarify that perhaps?
I could, as the maker of that motion, and the intent behind that was, when we presented that chart, we understood there would be three or four that wouldn't have a collective. That's, that's fine, I mean, I think that was the fairest way to go about this. We wanted to create, avoid over-concentration and distribute as much as possible, but we wanted it strict to a fair process, and I think that's the first way we can, that was the intent.
Councilman, could I rely then on the chart that planning produced? Because they gave one collective to a few neighborhoods that had approximately somewhere between 32,000 and 57,000. Those neighborhoods were ascribed one collective, and under 32,000 were ascribed zero.
When we voted, we held up that chart and said, we are going to implement this chart here, and we asked the city attorney's office to come up with language that could effectuate that. So in terms of what the collective body intended, let's implement this chart, so however you can do that. Thanks.
Okay. Is that clear to you? Okay. Having been the maker of the motion, there is technical clarification since we, no, we instructed the city attorney to come back, and they were asking what exactly one or two of the instructions was, and so they got that clarification from those makers. We now have the other items that are before us, Madam Clerk, turn the next item, please.
There is a special one motion before council that presented by Councilmember Labange, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay. This is Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings since the posting of today's agenda, a 7.2 magnitude earthquake struck the nation of Haiti. Immediate action is required to urge emergency aid and that the emergency management department monitor the crisis to identify how the city may lend its support to the relief effort. Council may first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. If we can open the roll on the findings, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, that is before us, Mr. Labange, maker of the motion.
Yeah, thank you very much, members. As our chair, president of our sister city committee, although no sister cities in Haiti, but we all have friendship cities around the world, I thought it was incumbent of us this time to stand with the rest of the world as we really see the impact of this devastating earthquake at a, the Caribbean and Atlantic plates at Haiti. This calls on our department, which I've talked to General Manager Jim Featherstone, to monitor the situation. As you know, the county Los Angeles County Fire Department has mobilized, and more news will come out. We all know how important it is to stand with others and countries around the world, as well as cities are helping in this regard, and I join with my colleagues, Mr. Weston, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Perry in this effort, as we all will join together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. If we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with please, without objection. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting it before.
Okay, those are posted and referred?
There's an excuse on the desk, Councilmember Hahn requests excuse Tuesday, January 26th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for personal business that meets council policy.
All right, she is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, any announcements, colleagues? Any announcements today? Do we have any, yeah, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, on behalf of all Americans, and I'm very happy that we are responding as quickly as we are to Haiti and the earthquake that happened there, and if anything else, folks, please get yourself prepared if you're not prepared. These earthquakes are happening all over the earth right now, and we better have our act together as best we can under these circumstances, but God bless the Haitian people.
Thank you.